Meeting to order, can I start with a roll call?
Rockham and Matone.
James Meyer.
Aziz Assam.
Norma Drummond.
Mary Seminera.
Thank you, can I ask everyone to stand for the pledge allegiance? Thank you. Okay, our next two meetings coming up will be September 24th and October 22nd. We have approval of one set of minutes, there were some slight adjustments to it, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of our meeting of July 23rd?
As amended, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, so with Mary abstaining. Okay, on our agenda for this evening, we have a request from the applicant on number one, to adjourn it to next month, as much as we requested that he be here, but we'll get into that. I will have an obligation to open that public hearing before we can take action to adjourn it, but there will be no action on items number five or number nine, so neither one was a public hearing, so if, those were just reviews. There is, I changed the format of the agenda for this specific meeting because we do have one item on for a decision that we have put in your packet, it's two different resolutions for the board to discuss, so what we're going to do is actually hold the public hearing first this evening, the public hearing, well, sorry, there's an adjourned one, so the two public hearings, and then we'll get to the decisions, including the discussion on the one specific item, before we get to the reviews, so I beg the board's indulgence with the change of the format for this evening, but I figured let's get any members of the public who are here for specific items, I want to be, you know, be courteous to their attention, to their time and attention, so. There's one other thing, at the town board meeting last Thursday, apparently there was a discussion about industrial zones, the town supervisor has formed a subcommittee to look at industrial zones and how we might be able to, you know, pay particular attention to some of the industrial zones in town, and what we might do to improve some of those or restrict some of those. So he has asked for a representative of the zoning board to be on there, he has specifically for me or my designee, I'm going to try to do it based on my background, so I will try to do it, in the event that the timing doesn't work out though, I am looking to see if somebody wishes to be the alternate for that, it's specifically for a discussion about the industrial zones. You want to do it, Aziz?
No, that's fine.
Okay, alright, so I'll communicate, keep you in the loop about what's going on, but again, just in, in the event, because my schedule is not always the easiest to effectuate that. Alright, so with that in place, we do have two public hearings this evening, those will be the only opportunity for public comment tonight, after that we'll, like I said, we'll have the discussion about the decisions, and actually issue decisions one way or another, and then we'll have reviews, which is generally the first time we're looking at most of these applications. So, item number one is Appeal 3882, Klaus Garage Inc., Dave Lawrence, owner of Klaus Garage Inc., 2619 Route 52, Hopewell Junction is requesting an expansion of a non-conforming use and interpretation of automobile service facility and used car sales, as well as a variance to the 100-foot buffer requirement on Route 52, in order to continue the outside display of cars pursuant to sections 194-3, 194-16, 194-86, 194-116, and Note 11 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, as I mentioned in the opening remarks, the applicant, much to our chagrin, because we specifically requested he be here at last month's meeting, he was on vacation, so he requested it adjourned today. There's been a little bit more discussion about perhaps asking him to modify his request, and so based on that, he has requested an additional month, but he has committed that he will, for next month, he will either be here, or they will pull the application. For the board's information, this application is now a year old, that's why we, we really just said, we've got to resolve this one way or another, it's just not fair to the town, to our board, it's not fair to the businesses who are operating nearby for the existing conditions to continue. So with that said, are there any questions or comments from board members? Or is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Dave Lawrence, owner of Klaus Garage, for a number of variances? So knowing that this will be reconvened next month, do I have a motion to adjourn to next month's?
Again, I, only, I think conceding to the request for adjournment based on the indication that they've agreed to make some changes based on discussions, otherwise, yes, I think we need to have an answer one way or the other.
And for the record, I mean, this application was received by the town on August 3rd of last year.
Right.
And it has been going on through adjourn hearing.
He's got all these dates crossed off on his sheet there, so...
It's just, you know, it's just, it just, I don't know, and we have sent a letter to them, so I think we have to make a decision next month, it's over a year old, it's already over a year old right now.
Yeah, I mean, the property is seemingly being used in terms of some expansion of stuff, so this has to be addressed one way or the other.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good, thank you. Alright, so item number two is a, is a public hearing, Appeal 3919, Deanna Edward, Deanna Two, New Hard Place, Hopewell Junction is requesting a two-foot variance for a proposed six-foot fence to be located in the front yard, and a variance to allow an existing 10-foot by 14-foot shed to remain in the front yard pursuant to sections 194-99 and 194-107B3 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Deanna. Okay, so last month we had the opportunity to review your application, you have the house that's at the corner of New Hard Place and...
Old Hopewell.
Old Hopewell Road, thank you, had to think, I was thinking up the street from Tatsanus. And you bought the house just a couple of years ago, and in, started clearing out the yard, you made a tremendous improvement to it, there were a lot of trees there, although I understand some of the neighbors are concerned about the removal of those trees. You have an existing shed that was been there for a long time, your house, I think, was built in 1985, if I remember correctly, as, and the shed was put up shortly thereafter, and you also have a pool on the property which needs a fence, so, all done with permits, all done as it should have been. But the issue is now that in 2002, after your house was built, the town changed the code, and at that time, the code was changed so that any homes or any properties that front along state or county roads now require a 100-foot buffer, and your house does not meet that buffer, your shed does not meet the buffer, and the fence that you're proposing, because you have a corner lot, you technically have two front yards, and so the fence that you're proposing, because it would be in front of the side of your house, ends up being technically in the front yard, and you are asking for a six-foot fence there, so. So we reviewed this last month, you also were, had a request in for the garage, but you've relocated, you've taken that out at this point, we talked about, if you're going to pursue that, you're, we're going to pursue that at a later time. You've talked about putting up some screening along the fencing, or some screening, some trees, something like that, we did receive, Pam, do I have that in my... We did get an email letter? Oh, I do have it, okay. So we do have a email letter that included a couple of pictures that I do want to read into the record, and a little bit of, talking about the concerns about sight distance along there, and the fact that by removing, having removed those trees, you've actually improved the sight distance for the people who live on New Hard and Derek and Dillon, so, you know, they, at least this one writer appreciates that, others have informed us that they were concerned about the fact that the planning board, when that subdivision was originally approved, had a requirement that those trees stay. Now, Aziz and I both having served on the planning board can probably tell you that we've always warned people that we can't require the trees stay on a property, property owners have the right to remove trees. Usually when we do a site plan approval, when we do a commercial property, a business property, that's when the planning board can impose conditions that trees like that stay. So anyway, that you're not asking for a new shed, you need a fence in front of a pool, the pool's already there, it was obtained with a permit, we're not going to ask you to move a house, so really, none of the things that you're asking for this evening are unreasonable, okay? Especially since you removed the garage or the shed. Is there anything else you wish to add at this point, otherwise I'm going to open up for questions?
No, no ma'am.
Alright, I have one neighbor letter that I would like to read, because it was received, to the East Fishkill Zoning Board dated August 26th, "I apologize, I apologize for not being present at the public hearing, but felt was important to reach out, I live on Derek Drive, which is off of New Hard Place, so I use this intersection multiple times on a daily basis. The owner of Two New Hard has done a lot of great work, obviously they care about their property and want to keep it nice. Since they cleared out the trees and the brush, this intersection has become exponentially safer. The line of sight has opened up allowing for a more safe exit and entry to New Hard Place. First let me say I have no objection to the shed staying where it is currently located. My concerns are with the placement of any fence, no matter the height. As I mentioned earlier, the line of sight has opened up and makes it safer to exit and enter New Hard Place, safer for cars and especially buses. We have a lot of buses that travel through New Hard Place to and from Marge's Way. It is used not just to pick up and drop off our children, but as a turnaround of sorts, because buses cannot turn right in and out of Tatsanus, so they use our neighborhood to loop around. Entering New Hard can be difficult as well, especially when coming from Route 82, it's a tight 90-degree turn, I have had to stop on Old Hopewell because I could not enter New Hard Place due to a car or bus exiting, some landscapers park in the road blocking one lane in, being able to drive the full entrance before you get to it is important. As you can see from picture B," and she includes some pictures in her letter here, even the yellow zoning beating sign can be, can partially block a car. I understand there needs to be some kind of fence due to the pool on the property, if you allow any fence, it would have, I would have to say, the higher the fence they request, the closer to the house it should be, so it does not block line of sight. Possibly asking for simulation drawings with a fence added so the board can properly see line of sight. I have enclosed pictures from two angles of this intersection, thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Lisa Dwyer from Derek Drive." And again, she does include some pictures, which, you know, given the angle and the telephone poles and the other things in the street, you can see where your, the sight distance can be impacted on there. So can you, for the record, just tell us where are you proposing to put the fence, so we can be clear, is it going to be closer to the house, or is it going to be closer to the street?
I believe all the board members have a copy of the site plan...
Of the plan, right.
And that shows that the fence will not protrude past the existing shed, so line of sight...
So again, if you're keeping it very close to the house...
Fifty-four foot roughly from the property line.
Right.
Which puts it 67 to 70 from the roadway.
I guess by extrapolation, they don't have a problem with the placement of the fence.
Right, and that's the farthest out that the fence is going to go according to his design.
Yeah, it goes further away as you go back.
Right, alright, so with that, thank you, I wanted to just, again, get that in, into the record, so...
And again, for the record, the fence, the proposed fence is 54 feet from Old Hopewell Road, and it is not near New Hard Place, and the person lives, or uses New Hard Place for exit and entrance, and so the neighbors won't be affected.
Should not affect sight distance, right.
Just a correction, the, it's 54 feet from the property line, which is somewhere between, I think it's 12 or 15 feet, correct, I don't have the exact number.
There's a right-of-way there, yeah, so it's even additionally in further because of the right-of-way.
If I remember correctly, before he tore down all the trees and brush, it was worse, so this is an improvement, any way you look at it, regardless of how far the fence comes out, still an improvement.
Agreed, so any other comments or questions from board members?
No.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Edward Deanna to New Hard Place, Hopewell Junction, requesting a two-foot variance for a proposed six-foot fence to be located in the front yard, and a variance to allow an existing 10-foot by 14-foot shed to remain in the front yard pursuant to sections 194-99 and 194-107B3 of the zoning ordinance? Sure. Anybody who's going to speak this evening, after you're done speaking, if we could just ask you, there's a clipboard on that table, if we could ask you to just print your name on there, we would appreciate it, so we have your name for the minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, good evening, good evening to the board members, thank you for the letter alerting us to the variance, we would not have known otherwise. We live, my name is Michael White, my wife Patricia and I reside at Four New Hard Place, we're the immediate neighbors and the ones most affected by what's occurred at the property. I keep hearing the word improvements, but I guess it's, it's how you look at it. We want to be good neighbors, we always try to be good neighbors, and Ed and Carissa certainly seem to be very nice people. But they're new to the neighborhood, we've been there, we were the second house there, nineteen eighty-five. And they clear cut the whole property. Which, you know, when you, I've designed a lot of maps as my engineering career in zoning, and I know what we were always required to do, what you did not want to do is clear cut property, you wanted to preserve as many of the natural features and trees as you could, you clear enough of the septic system, front yard, backyard, you know, whatever was reasonable, but if you could leave trees, that was always the plan, and we were always required to do that. And if you look at the grading plans that accompany the subdivision plat for the subdivision of this property, you'll see that it does show areas to be preserved, areas to be cleared. When they first started doing this, I asked, how much are you going to clear? And why are you doing it, I'm just curious, you're just going to give yourself more lawn to mow, and I was told, well, that's, that was the whole point, they wanted to mow a lot of lawn. I had never heard of that before, but if, if they want more lawn to mow, okay, it's their choice. I had asked more than once if maybe some trees along the periphery could at least be, be saved, you know, to preserve at least some privacy, but every single bit of privacy we had is gone, and I can't tell you the number of people that have spoken to myself and my wife, what happened to that property, we can see your house now, that's terrible, did they get a permit, did they get permission? You know, it, it, so it's been very tough on us, we don't consider it an improvement at all. Certainly, you want to preserve sight distance, we always had to do that also, but some trees for privacy could have been preserved. Are there any descriptions, maps, anything that indicates what the fence will look like, its height, anything like that at all?
Fence is, we, it's, of course, for a variance for six feet, so it is proposed to be six feet, and his application does, actually showed, it does, it's drawn on his property as to where he's proposing to put the fence.
Okay, is, it is a solid fence?
I believe, I don't remember our discussion from last month, so...
It's a solid fence, okay. Because the fence can't come fast enough for us, obviously. So, we don't have any objections to the variance, you know, we don't want to hold them up. I just wanted to know what kind of fence it was, where it was going, and the sooner the better for us. And I can only hope that, and I don't know if this is Ed's plan still or not, he'd said that they might try to put some trees or some, some type of something along the periphery of Old Hopewell Road to help with the, the privacy. I know that's not on before the board this evening, but I can only hope that that comes true as well. So, it's going to be a solid fence, we don't have any objections to the variance, we certainly don't want to hold them up, but I did want the board to know what happened, and why it's, not everybody considers it an improvement. Okay, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. My name's Ray Smith, I live across the street from, about 50 feet from this property, and I've been there for almost 70 years.
On New Hard or across Lake Wal?
On Old Hopewell Road.
Old Hopewell Road, I'm sorry.
He's about 50 feet across. Now, the trees there, were left there for a reason, Mr. Cronizer's father built that house about 30 years ago, and he left those trees there as a buffer, and to me, it never bothered, that thought looked nice, you know, because they had a pool over there, I mean, it's, I don't think there's any zoning requirements, they can, you can't cut the trees, so that's okay, but it, it does look terrible compared to what it was for the last 30 years, and I've been there, the trees were there before that time. If there's something you could do, I have an objection to the, to the little shed, because that's 50, it shows it's 50 feet off, so that's okay as far as the separation goes. Maybe some, I don't know, some kind of, whatever you can, trees, bush, whatever plan you could come up with, that we could look at. As far as the fence goes, if we could see what it looks like, because a solid fence, there's different styles, we don't want it to look like Fort Knox, or Fort Apache, that type of thing, you know, if we could look at that, and the garage would definitely be no, because the garage is 25 feet off the property line, and it, it's almost the same size as a house, the perimeter would be like a second house on two lots. The gentleman before me, he asked a couple of questions that I would have asked as well, so those are my concerns.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Okay, so Mr. Deanna, if you don't mind, can you describe the fence that you're proposing to put up there, because there's nothing in our application packet that shows what you're thinking of?
It's the standard Eastern V300, six-foot high, the white vinyl privacy fence.
It's a solid white vinyl?
Yep.
Okay.
Nothing fancy, nothing...
And we did talk about doing some landscaping along there, and, but we, I think we had a discussion about whether it was going to be closer to the road or closer in breaking up the fence. I mean, it's a long expanse of fence, and as you probably heard even last month, where we talked about a couple of properties, where they had long expanses of white fence, if they could put some groupings of plantings along the fence to help break it up, again, so your neighbors don't see a solid white...
The, the plan is to do some evergreen landscape buffer along the property line...
Along the property line, that's where I thought you were talking about putting it, because you were, you still want to be able to use your lawn and have some amount of privacy there, okay. So your plan is, for the neighbors who express an interest, the plan is to restore some vegetation there, but it's going to be more of a landscape buffer along there?
And I will be doing landscaping, you know, a couple of trees throughout the front yard and what have you, so...
So the landscaping plan is along Old Hopewell Road?
Yes.
And anything on the other side, on New Hard Place? Alright.
No.
That's probably where the sight distance would be more impactful, if you put anything along there. Okay, any other comments or questions from board members? If not, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is an appeal number 3919, applicant is Edward Deanna, requesting a two-foot variance for a proposed six-foot fence to be located in the front yard, and a variance for an existing 10-foot by 14-foot shed to remain in the front yard pursuant to section 194-99 and 194-107B3 of the zoning ordinance. Resolution offered by the zoning board member Aziz Assam, whereas applicant has applied for the above stated variances, and whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision and order and find, and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as the lot has road frontage on the town road, New Hard Place, as well as on the county road, Old Hopewell Road, and the code does require variance for structures located in the front yard, as there's an existing in-ground pool located in the rear yard, which has a certificate of compliance, and applicant is requesting a six-foot vinyl fence to be installed around the pool area, which would encroach into the required setback area of the Old Hopewell side of the property in order to give his family and pets more recreational area adjacent to the heavily traveled county road. Although a building permit and a certificate, certificate of occupancy were issued for the house in 1984, and for the shed in 2000, the town board adopted Local Law Number Nine in 2002, which required structures to have 100-foot setbacks for the state and county roads located outside the hamlet. Therefore, both the existing house and the sheds are pre-existing non-conforming structures.
Read this paragraph.
Okay. The variance requested is not substantial, as while a six-foot fence is in the front yard may be numerically substantial, the fence is setback 54 feet from the property line, and applicants have agreed to plant evergreens along the property line on Old Hopewell Road in order to soften the visual impact. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above stated variances.
Second. Thank you. Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Rockham?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, okay, now you'll just deal with the building department. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Pam, this is the...
Thank you.
Resolution. Okay, so we are done our public hearings for this evening, our next item up is a decision, we have item number three, Appeal 3901, Harthsworn, Catherine Harthsworn, 843 Farmers Mills Road, Parmel, is requesting an area variance of .42 acres for lot count calculation in order to subdivide a 7.81 acre parcel of land, which is zoned B1 and R3, that she owns at 3875 Route 52, into two lots, one of which is proposed to be 3.23 acres, and the other is proposed to be 4.5 acres. A .58 acre area variance for the buildable area for Lot 2, a 13-foot width variance for the width of the flagpole, all pursuant to sections 163-19C1, 163-19H1, and 194-92.1 of the East Fishkill Code. So you, the board members have before you two resolutions that we worked with on our attorneys to prepare. If any board members have questions, we've, you know, had public hearing for multiple sessions, but there is no public hearing at this point, so there's no more public input related to this. If you want to review the two options that you have before you, I think that could set the stage for our discussion, or any questions that you may have.
My question really was to understand the intent of the lot count calculation, and how that factors into this decision, because the .42 lot variance is something I don't really understand, and I would like to understand that before being able to respond to this.
So in accordance with town code, given the wetlands, given the, the conditions of this person's lot, by the code, she's entitled to 1.58 lots.
Okay.
She is not entitled to two full lots.
Just given the code.
And so she's requesting relief, she's requesting the variance of almost half of that extra lot.
Right.
Okay? So the question is, is that substantial or not?
I mean, the thing is, it's, in some sense, it is pretty significant, but again, the difference between significant and substantial, I mean, it is, I mean, it's...
If you remember our discussion, she had the opportunity to seek a rezoning of the property, and the rezoning of the property would have made it residential, not requiring these, this lot count calculation. So there's multiple issues, there's multiple avenues that were open to her, this is the one that she pursued. This has been to the planning board, it's been, I shouldn't say that, it's been to the planner multiple times, the planner did not necessarily agree with it, and so that's one of the reasons she had to come to us for relief.
Yeah, and another thing is that there's a wetlands right...
On the property.
On the property, and a big, substantial amount, and she had purchased the property knowing that there were New York State wetlands up there, so it wasn't like it was a surprise, so...
So at this point, I'd be looking for a board member to make a motion on, pick a resolution and make a motion, and then we'll see what the votes are. Yeah, exactly, we have to see what the vote is.
Okay, I'll make a motion to go with the, the...
Just read.
Just, I throw out a comment, I mean, one thing that bothers me is, if you're going to have a business, and, I'm trying to remember, and I unfortunately dimmed my nose, one thing that concerns me is the flag, and if you're going to have all that access going in and out with a business, and fire trucks and stuff, that, that is something that concerns me. Just to add part of the consideration for Mr. Assam before he makes a decision which way he wants to go.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is that you have, I mean, on this particular property, you have currently a commercial zone property...
In the front?
In the front, and then also another house that is rented, and it's in the commercial zone, and then you have this whole land, I mean, a flag lot that is being proposed as a residential property, and that, and the proposed residential property is, is huge, I mean, so, I mean, it's, it's pretty big, and there's a lot of disturbance, even though they're going to try to keep the disturbance to the minimum, but it's still a substantially big... big property that they're trying to put up there.
So what's, I'm just trying to figure this out in my head, so then what's the danger? You said it's a big, it's a substantial amount of property and what's the danger of doing it? That's what I'm trying to figure out from reading this.
In my opinion, it is quite impactful to the property in the front. Whether it's continued as a residential use, where you've now got a driveway with multiple cars, she's proposing a five-bay garage, I believe, in the back with a recreational vehicle and other vehicles, so with a, you know, that you're now bringing traffic within thirteen feet, what realistically was at first remembered two feet and then they moved it back to the ten. So it's actually within ten feet of the, of the house. And then the, the fact that it's the zoning, the town code says that that property should be a commercial use. Now, they haven't been able to make it work as a commercial use because it's been rented for residential for years now.
Right.
So its ability to be returned to the commercial use, and if you remember the property, if you're facing the property on Route fifty-two, there's another commercial building there to the right as well. So the ability to return it to its proper use, commercial use, is going to be very limited if they've now subdivided the property and taken away land that could potentially be used to build a larger commercial building in conformance with the zoning, but she didn't pursue a rezoning of the property to make it residential, so. So the impediment is the ability to restore that property to a commercial use in conformance with the code is.
But could it be, could it go back to commercial use in the existing structure or a different structure built on the same footprint?
It could, but.
Not necessarily expanded?
If you remember that they're only providing a limited number of parking spaces with that building.
Do you remember?
So.
Limit parking and, because you have the wetlands. That's wetlands on that portion as well, it's the whole length of the property, front to back, pretty much.
So anyway.
I mean, I'm sure in twenty, thirty years from now, if they wanted to convert that back to commercial, I don't think that would, probably wouldn't be that much of an issue.
Well, they can, I mean, if they want to, see, that's, but you're limited for yourself. It's going to be commercial, what's allowed in a B one, and what can you really put in on that limited amount of property if we grant the thing? That's, that's the issue, I think that's what the chair is raising. Can you? Yeah, you could tomorrow put something in there if you had, I don't know, a small office, you had a couple of attorneys and, and a couple of secretaries or support staff and then you had a couple of spots for people to park, I guess you could do that. You're not going to do much more than something like that.
And she has not demonstrated, not that she needed you, she has not demonstrated a hardship. The property, the price that she bought the property for is likely, based on her own words of the most recent appraisal that she had on the property, it's likely its value right now, which given the economy, so she hasn't shown that she's been hurt in any way, except for the fact that the town would not allow her to move her paving trucks and her paving business to the rear of the lot. She could not use it for the, her original intended purchase of the property.
The whole purpose of the subdivision, if I'm not mistaken, is to also create more income out of it by having another property to sell or rent.
But she, she didn't say that, she just said it's for her personal house.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the, the front residence or building will continue to be rented, there was never any indication that that would disappear, they, they want to preserve that, so.
So, I'm just.
They're still looking for a double use out of the property.
Correct. And the front building can be zoned, I mean, isn't the commercial, even though it's a residence, but it isn't a commercial zone?
I mean, I, I know quite a few properties that are like that, that is zoned residential and commercial, where you can have a restaurant there or you can have an apartment building. So I don't see that as a major issue.
Except that what's left, you're not going to put a restaurant there. That's, that's the concern. You cut that down, what they're looking for in the front property would be what? Three-point-two-three acres with a big chunk of that being wetlands.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, by the time you have the setback from the wetlands and you have a restaurant with requirements for a restaurant.
But, but does every. Not just a restaurant, it could be just any retail business.
But it could be an office, which would still make it commercial, I mean.
Sure.
That's what I said, if it's a small office, a couple of attorneys, a couple of support staff, but then you have a couple of clients, you've filled up the parking lot.
Right.
So, again, it's a very limited use if it's, the lot's reduced to that size.
But, like, and if I'm not mistaken, twenty, thirty years from now, they could reverse this whole thing and increase the amount of commercial space, no?
No.
Because they're encroaching into the commercial area now, is what you're saying, making it smaller.
I don't think that's.
They're breaking a lot up.
They're breaking the lot into two.
Right, right.
So, could they then seek a rezoning on the residential lot in the back once it's totally residential? I guess so, but you can't reverse this process, you'd be starting from scratch.
So my point is, what you just said, can they change it afterwards in twenty, not reverse it, so take away that word.
Yeah, well, anybody can make an application in the future.
So I don't think, my point is, I don't think that's the end-all.
No, no, it's not. Question is, is what, if it's granted, is what's created by the granting appropriate to what the property's owned under the town law and what is left for that B one lot? That's, I think, the issue that's being raised that we're discussing. You've got to look at what's created, not what could be done in the future. Something could technically happen and the whole area get rezoned for some reason. You know, a big interchange go in, that'd be impossible at the height of eighty-four, but something gets zoned industrial or something and, yeah, and we're looking at people trying to accommodate that kind of zoning, but I don't know. So to speculate on the future, I'm not sure is, is helpful, we're stuck with what we are in front of us today.
But we do have to be concerned about other applicants with similar properties that may, where we may be setting a precedent here or we may make a decision that would be then potentially allowing or not allowing other properties to seek the same relief.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's one additional caveat to be concerned about.
Yeah, and the thing is that the, the variance that are being requested are quite a few, so it's not just a small miniscule change.
Well, like, they could eliminate the, they could reduce the flagpole width, but then they're putting the property line and the driveway that much closer to the house.
Correct.
They said within two feet of the house.
Exactly.
Which means somebody couldn't even really walk around their own property or get the, get the leaves out of the gutter without, you know, putting a ladder in, they're not even on their own property.
Correct.
So, what's the pleasure of the board?
And then you have a problem with the setback, then you need another variance because you wouldn't meet the setback requirement for the commercial building.
Right.
So I'm to be, I'm looking at.
Just offer a resolution.
Okay. So this is appeal number thirty-nine oh one. Applicant is Catherine Harthshorn requesting a area variance for zero-point-four-two lot variance based on the lot count calculations found in the town code, section one sixty-three dash nineteen dash C one, zero-point-five-eight buildable area variance for the requirement for, of section one ninety-three dash nineteen H one for the flag lot located within the R three zoning district and a thirteen-foot width variance for the requirement of section one ninety-four dash ninety-two dash one for the width of the flagpole. The variants are, the variances are collectively referred to as requested variances. The property is located at thirty-eight seventy-five Route fifty-two, a resolution offered by zoning board of appeals member Aziz Hassan, whereas the applicant is the owner of a, of one, of thirty-eight seventy-five Route fifty-two, which is split zone with the portion of the property closest to the road being zoned B one and the latter portion of the property being zoned R three, and whereas the property is currently one lot and only structures on the property is located in the B one zone which is used as a pre-existing non-conforming residence, and whereas the applicant is proposing to subdivide the property to build a primary residence on the portion of the property zoned R three for, for her family and to maintain a structure used as a residence on the portion of the property zoned B one and where it's a large amount of property consists of New York State wetlands and New York State DEC wetlands and the adjacent buffer area necessitating the variance of the property, and whereas this is a type-two action of the, under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, seeker pursuant to section nine, New York Code, nine, six-one-seven-five-C-seventeen and no further review pursuant, pursuant to seeker required at this time, and whereas a legal notice was published in the New York, in the Southern Dutchess News on May twenty-second, twenty nineteen, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on May twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen and continued it and then closed and adjourned the public hearing on June twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen. Now therefore, as a result of the foregoing, the decision and order of the zoning board of appeals is as follows. One, the ZBA denies the applicant's requested variance for the following reasons. A, there will be an undesirable change in the, in the neighborhood, granting the requested variances would allow the property to contain two residences when a large portion of the property is either in the DEC, the New York State DEC wetland or adjacent buffer area, leaving little land area for the occupants to utilize without interfering with sensitive environmental areas. Granting this relief when there is, when there are no grounds for hardship variances would mitigate the zoning of the property and surrounding area as intended by the town board and envisioned by, in the master plan. In addition, there will set a harmful precedent throughout the town in that an owner of any property that does not meet the lot count or buildable area requirements would be able to argue that his or her property should be subdivided. Given the circumstances, these variances would allow two residences on the property which is partially zoned B one. Additionally, the residence in the front property, the portion, will be substantially limited in its future use by granting of the requested variances and any subdivisions of the property as follows. One, the additional traffic will, that will pass on the drive, on the driveway that is only ten feet away from the structure headed to and from the new residence in the rear with the proposed five-bay garage will substantially impact the users in the front with additional noise and by limiting the use of the current parking area, both for parking and as a play area for the children living there. And two, the potential commercial reuse of the building on, in the B one zone will be limited with only, I think it's four. I think, four, I think, or limited with, limited or with only.
One, two, three, four.
Okay, with only four, okay, let me put it down. With only four parking spaces that can fit within the limited dimensions of the new parking lot and the previously mentioned environmental constraints. Without the potential subdivision, the building in the, in the front would be expanded with parking, parking provided in the rear, the residential portion to return the building to commercial use as was anticipated by the town zoning determination through its comprehensive planning process. B, the benefit of the building residence on the portion of the property zoned R three can be achieved by removing the structure located in B one zone. If the structure in the B one zone were removed, no variances would be needed. In addition, the applicant would best be served by petitioning to the town board to consider a rezoning of the property. C, the requested variances are substantial, the lot count calculation variances is for zero-point-four-two, which equals to a variance of twenty-one percent of the buildable area variance is for zero-point-five-eight, which equals a variance of approximately twelve-point-nine percent, and the variance for the width for the flagpole is thirteen feet, which requires a variance of twenty-six percent. D, the proposed variances will, would have an adverse impact on the environment as a large portion of the property consists of the New York State DEC wetland and the land in the New York State watershed and adjacent buffer area and, and construction of a large residence with an extensive paved area would lead to runoff in these areas. E, the applicant's harm is self-created. They purchased a split zone property with these environmental limitations and are deemed to have been on notice of the existing condition of the property and the town of East Fishkill Code. Additionally, the applicant stated on the record that they had a recent appraisal of the property which indicated that the value of the property has not been significantly diminished since their purchase and the continued non-conforming use of the front building and no expanding use of the property. Now therefore be, be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right, so. That is that decision. We do have another decision this evening. We took the time last month to make sure because this is a normal residence and this person, you don't, don't, doesn't normally deal with issues like Phil, so we had the town engineer put provisions in here that are, they're normal provisions and a permit, so this way it just puts it up front for you to understand what's going to be required. Okay, so item, we are up to item number four, which is appeal three-nine-one-three. This is the decision. So Lori Tucker, one fifty-seven Binnewater Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a special permit in order to bring in five thousand cubic yards of fill pursuant to section one ninety-four dash seventy-five. We've previously held the public hearing, so we're not going to take any additional comment. So actually, you can actually sit down.
Oh.
You don't have to. And, and so if we, somebody wishes to offer this resolution.
I'll offer, this is appeal number thirty-nine thirteen. Applicant is Lori Tucker requesting an application for a special permit to bring in five thousand cubic yard of fill pursuant to section one ninety-four dash seventy-five of the zoning code, of the, of the town code. Resolution offered by zoning board of appeals member Aziz Hassan, whereas applicant has applied for a special permit pursuant to section one ninety-four dash seventy-five of the town code to add up to five thousand cubic yard to fill it, or fill to create a backyard and to issue, and to fix issues with soil erosion, and whereas the property that is the subject of this application is located at one fifty-seven Binnewater Road, Hopewell Junction, New York, one-two-five-three-three, the property, and whereas this is an unlisted action under the state, under seeker, and whereas a legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on July seventeen, twenty nineteen, and whereas zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on July twenty-third, twenty nineteen. Now therefore, as a result of the foregoing, the decision and order of the zoning board of appeals is as follows. One, this action is not, will not result in a significant adverse environmental impact and therefore the ZBA issues a negative declaration of state environmental quality review seeker. And two, this, this applicant, application meets the requirement of section one ninety-four dash seventy-five of the town code and therefore the ZBA grants the application for a special permit for up to five thousand cubic yards of fill subject to the following conditions. A, the applicant should submit a plan to the satisfaction of the town engineer which includes erosion and dust control practices. B, all fill brought to the property must be clean fill without any dilatorious material. C, twelve is a, twelve is the maximum number of loads to, of fill that would be brought to the property per day. D, fill may not be, fill may only be brought to the property between eight AM and four PM on weekdays. And E, fill will not be brought to the property on weekends or on holidays. F, the applicant must establish an escrow account which will be, which will be replenished if needed in the amount of three thousand five hundred dollars for inspection by the town's environmental monitor. G, the applicant will come before the board in one year to, in order to give them an update on the project. Now therefore, be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of, of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member, member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
I have a question on B. How is, how is B monitored? What is the mechanism that determines that the fill is clean?
Rick.
Is there something in here that needs to be?
When the town has cause to question material that's brought in through the fill process, is it the town that comes out and looks at it or is it New York State DEC actually comes out?
Town engineer wants to assign the environmental monitor to check the soils and if he feels that something is questionable, then we'll have to take soil samples.
Okay, well, we want to be sure if that there's not a, a, a large, you know, construction debris should not be brought in. Many people claim it's Phil.
Does it happen at the time that it's delivered or after the fact that it's been put in? And that's really my question.
Generally after the fact, but she has the ability to review each load as it comes in.
Okay.
All right, she can check and physically look and see what is she seeing in that truck.
There's no chunks in there.
Exactly, so.
She can also request certifications from the point of origin.
And are we going to make that subject to this decision?
No, actually, she'll get a permit, all right, that will be subject, she'll be dealing with our town engineer.
Okay.
But, again, because she's not used to dealing with these types of things, we wanted to lay out what the requirements were. We wanted to lay out what the requirements were, so that she doubly understands all the conditions required with bringing in this quantity of fill.
Okay, great, thank you.
And for the record, under F, there is a escrow which will be used by the town environmental monitor.
Right, to do those inspections.
They will do the inspection.
I guess my question was, were the inspection happening before the fill goes in, or after the fill is put in?
Periodically, could be my best guess. Unless there's a complaint raised by somebody.
Okay, great, thank you.
So do you second it?
Second.
Thank you. All right, so votes as follows, Jim.
Aye.
Aziz.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Rocco.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries, you are all set. Now you'll just deal with the engineer, right? The town engineer. Okay? Have a good evening.
Now the fun starts.
Not tonight. No, 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 no. When you're ready to pull your permit, that's, okay? Okay, item number six is appeal thirty-nine eleven, Triditi, Tara Triditi, thirty-two Carroll Drive, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a two-foot variance to allow a six-foot fence to be located in front of her dwelling, as well as a twenty-foot, twenty-five-foot frontline variance for an existing eight-foot by ten-foot shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety-eight and one ninety-four dash one oh seven D of the zoning ordinance. Is Carol here? Oh, okay, good. So we did have an opportunity, we looked at your original review like two months ago, and then we had some questions and we told you you needed to get a survey.
Right.
Okay, so.
We dropped that off at the, do we have a survey? Do you have a copy of it?
Got more than a survey, I thought.
With pictures. And we, we actually did it a week before the last meeting, we postponed it because we didn't have enough time. So we weren't here last month.
Yeah, you weren't here last month, and that's why we wanted to-
So at that time, we dropped off the-
Did you drop off just one copy of it?
Yeah, it was just one of a couple of different things. Pictures and layout out, we're going to do the beds in front of the-
Okay, just bear with us for a minute. Pam was actually not here at the last meeting, so that's, might, might be why, you weren't, she was on vacation, so that might be why she might be a little confused about, okay, so. So we have a survey that shows us you have a gate that's sixteen feet in from the property line, and your shed is nineteen point one feet in from the property line.
Yeah.
The proposed fence.
Right.
Okay, and you're proposing this fence to go between the shed-
And the house.
Over to be essentially in line with the drive, with the house.
Correct.
Almost in line. It's not quite straight, but it's probably because of the lengths of the fencing. Okay. Is there, oh, my gosh, there's a landscape plan here? Look at this. Very nice. She's got some pictures to show. Wow, you have quite the drop-off there.
Mm-hmm.
So what she's showing is that there's no space, I'll pass these pictures down, you guys can see them in one second. There's no place to show, move the shed, because literally you can see there's steps down from the shed, and then the topography of the ground just drops off, and there's even a water body down there, so.
Yeah, there's a pond, yeah.
You've got a pond down there, okay. So yeah, there's, there, what she's showing is that there's really no place for the shed to go beyond where it is. Thank you, the pictures are very, very helpful without anybody having to go into your backyard. So. So how long is that fence going to stretch across the front? Do we have a measurement of that?
I think it's seventy-two feet.
It's seventy-two feet. Are you proposing any landscaping in front of the fence to break up this seventy-two feet of-
Sure, it's what you've seen.
That's what those landscape areas are for in front of the fence.
The little blue things, and then-
Yes, so if you drive by, you'll see the landscaping.
Okay, cool, good. Yeah, as we said, it's, doesn't have to be all along, we just want something to just break up the-
Two sections of it.
Because otherwise, a big white fence like that can be quite distracting, so. Good, all right, so it's clear why the shed is where it is.
Done?
Any comments or questions from board members? If, if not?
The picture tells a thousand words.
Picture, exactly. Can we have this, oh, this is our copy for the-
Mm-hmm, what it is.
Okay.
Motion to advertise.
Thank you.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so Pam's going to give you your instructions for your public hearing, and then we'll see you next month for your public hearing.
Great, great.
Okay? Thank you, really, you're, you're, the way you put that together was really nice, the landscape areas, the, the, showing us the pictures to really understand your backyard, so thank you for your time and attention to doing that. Okay, item number seven, appeal three-nine-one-two, Ramirez, Joseph Ramirez, fourteen Finore Court, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a variance to allow a six-foot fence to be located in front of the dwelling pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety-eight of the zoning ordinance. Mr. Ramirez. Okay, we did ask whether he wished to withdraw his application because we were not going to essentially be able to give him what he was asking for, so can we make a motion to request the clerk to correspond with the applicant to determine what he wishes to do?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, so no show. Okay, item number eight, appeal three-nine-one-six. I apologize ahead of time if I don't say this wrong, if I don't say this right. Vladimir Gogritiani, thirty-five sixty-nine Route fifty-two, Stormville, is requesting a two-foot sideline and seventy-three foot frontline variance for a pre-existing detached garage built in nineteen forty-four, a thirty-eight foot frontline variance for a pre-existing six hundred and forty-four square foot dwelling, also built in nineteen forty-four, and an expansion of a non-conforming structure in order to construct a two hundred and forty-seven foot addition to the dwelling pursuant to section of the bulk, the schedule of bulk regulations in section one ninety-four dash one twenty-three of the zoning ordinance. Can you pronounce your last name?
Gogritiani.
Gogritiani, okay. I didn't do bad, then. All right, so this is the first time we're actually having a chance to look at your, review your application with you. So you have a house that was built in nineteen forty-four, so the fact that it, where it's placed doesn't meet code. Code did not come into place in, in East Fishkill until nineteen sixty-three, so we're, you know, we're not going to make you move your house. But if you can just explain what you're proposing to do now, it would really be helpful to us, like what's the expansion for?
The addition for the family room.
Okay.
But the, the, the problem was the survey, who did the survey, they were missing the dimension from the garage to the zone, the property line. So I went back to the survey, they put the number, so I got the new, there was a, um, problem with it.
Yeah, we have your survey.
Oh, you got it.
So is it the little box that's off on the, if I'm looking at your house straight on, it's off to the left? There's a little rectangular box, is that's where you're proposing the addition?
Yes.
Okay. It's not, it's not labeled, so that's why I wasn't sure. Okay, so that's proposed to give you a family room onto your home?
Yes.
Is that what you're proposing? Okay, and it's going to match the existing siding of the house?
Um, probably we're going to change the siding.
You're probably, but you're going to change the siding of the whole house?
Yes, because it's all-
Not just this?
No.
We want to be sure that your addition is going to look, fit in nicely with the house, so.
Yeah.
Okay, and there's a picket fence, so it's really hiding the addition anyway, is-
Oh, this for the kids, I have a two little, three actually, child, and then that's, blocking the way for them to went outside the main road, so.
Okay.
But that's just temporary. Soon they grow up, I'm going to take the fence down.
Oh, okay.
It's a three-feet fence, just for the block them.
It's a three-foot fence, okay.
Yes.
All right.
It's inside the property.
Comments or questions from board members? He's only here because the, the house was built way before code existed, so.
I have no questions.
Motion to advertise.
Me neither, thank you.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, so if you see Pam at the end, she's going to give you your instructions because you have to put a sign on your property, so your neighbors get apprised of this, and then we'll see you next month for a public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right, there is no item nine, as I announced earlier, so we are up to item number ten. Appeal three-nine-two-zero, Floris Corp., Floris Corp., fifteen sixty-three, Route eighty-two, Hopewell Junction, is requesting to amend their special use permit in order to allow twenty-four hour operation of their gasoline filling station pursuant to section one ninety-four dash eighty-five of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, we are back.
We're back. We were here last month, we had some discussions about coming up with some sales data and so that we could demonstrate to the board, you know, different activity through the, through the store during those hours that were currently closed. I presented a cover letter with the graph, and it's also noted on the graph, I just want to make clear to the board that this graph is not the result of sales at this location, because we were grabbing current data. We took the data from our May Pac location, it's right off the Teconic too, very similar store, I mean, similar amenities, it's got a convenience store, same type of gasoline and, and gas pumps. So we tend to find that the activity in these two stores is very similar, and that's why we provided the data from that. So the way that the graph works is, if you're going along the bottom line of the graph, the number one denotes the timeframe midnight to one AM, two would be one AM to two AM, three, three AM to four AM, four is four AM to five AM, and then five is five AM to six AM. We noted, noted also on, in the, in the bottom, just by way of explanation, that the way that we were able to track what was being sold, or items being sold at that station, was just by assigning one unit per item. So, for example, if somebody came in and purchased thirty gallons of gas, it's just noted on here as one item, but it, again, it gives you a feel for, for traffic through the location during those, you know, twelve to five hours.
Can you just tell me what months these two weeks are in?
Yes, this is, this graph was produced the two weeks following our appearance at, at our last meeting.
Okay, so the first, the last week of July, the first week of August, that sort of thing?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to see whether it was summertime, whether it was normal business, that sort of thing.
Yeah, that's why, we, we pulled the, the data after we were here last time, we just set up a, you know, they set something up in their system so that they can, could gather it, and then we're submitting there. It's interesting kind of looking at it, I mean, some of the, the timeframes in here aren't even, some of the busy times, I guess, would not even be stuff that I would expect, like if you're looking at the, at the two Sundays that are noted on here, you know, number two, which is one to two AM, is, is busy on a Sunday. Me personally, I-
Well, that's because it's still Saturday night to some people.
Yeah, I mean, I just wouldn't expect some of the, we're seeing, yeah.
I think this clearly shows us that a lot of people are looking for gas or other items in a convenience store between the hours of five AM and six AM, except for Saturday morning and Sunday morning.
Right.
All right, but yeah, the, obviously, the, the late night hours are at their peak on Saturday night and Sunday night.
Correct.
Sunday morning, actually, so it's really Sunday, the, the early Sunday, I guess it's late Friday night, sorry, late Friday night and late Saturday night is when the-
Correct, yeah.
So, interesting about Tuesday night into Wednesday, though, that's-
Yeah, yep.
So, the reason you, we requested this additional information is because your request for a second consideration is not a given, okay? This board must pass, well, for anybody, Mary wasn't at our last meeting, and so for anybody who did not hear this last time around, this board must decide unanimously that it wishes to reconsider this application because you have been previously denied, your applicant has been previously denied, the ability to have twenty-four hour service. And one of the things that we had asked was, because we recognize that was at least fifteen, over fifteen years ago at that time.
Yes, the original approval was in ninety-nine, so it was-
But I think the last time it was looked at was like two thousand and one.
Two thousand and one, correct.
Okay, so it's, it's been some amount of time has passed since then. And so we wished to find out where there, what has changed since there, since then? What are the circumstances that this board should consider to make us favorably even consider the application? And so one of the things that we talked about was that the available gas station on the Teconic Parkway itself, the old station down by Miller, not by Miller Hill, by Hosner Mountain Road.
Hosner Mountain.
Used to be open and it closed since the last request. So there's actually no gas available along the Teconic Parkway itself. Additionally, times have changed a lot, in the early two thousands and late two thousands even, you know, many, many people moved to Duchess County. Our growth, you know, was pretty significant at that time. So there are many, many more people on the Teconic Parkway at this point heading south. The Duchess County and state DOT, they keep traffic counts, we could actually get those numbers and see, each year they do a count of every September, how much, what the traffic is, even just between I eighty-four and Route fifty-two. They can tell us just that in, you know, specific locations, how much traffic has increased. And so it's easy to see that the growth has really grown exponentially since, you know, in the thirty years I've lived up here at least, so it's, it's clear. Now, what you're not showing us really is that it requires twenty-four hour, except that one of the things that you've brought to our attention is that the planning board has recently approved, given site plan approval to another gas station on the other side of the Teconic, on the eastern side of the Teconic Parkway. So there will be a new gas station that will be built, and because that is not as close to residences, that gas station has been granted the ability to have twenty-four hours. That is a new circumstance, okay? And so in the interest of giving, keeping businesses competitive, I think it behooves this board to consider whether this gas station, even though it is, this one is closer to residences, whether this also deserves equal footing on that competition basis. All right, so is there anything else you wish to consider? Because I really would like to have the, take a board, a vote of the board to even determine whether we want to go forward with this application any further.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a pretty good summary of, of the points that we had raised at the, at the last meeting. Couple things to add into there, number one, I think not only has the traffic along those, you know, you mentioned the Teconic and I eighty-four, not only is that busier now, but we certainly, this area has become more of a commuter location. I mean, people, you know, as Westchester and Putnam get more expensive and people have to expand to find the schools and the housing they want, you know, now we've got people who are traveling further to work, going into the city, so they need to be up earlier when, you know, when we may be closed so they can get their gas and their coffee and head off down the road. And two, two items to note regarding the other station that has now been approved for the other side of the Teconic. One is, you know, when we came here back in nineteen ninety-nine, if you review the minutes, you're going to see that a lot of the people who were concerned at that time with, you know, our hours of operation were people who lived behind us, not, not along eighty-two there. I mean, if you take a look at mapping from Arthur'sburg, the way it comes back around, it's not that terribly different, meaning from, from our distance from our station to those homes behind with where the new station is going to be and, and the homes that, that are bent around on Arthur'sburg there. And finally, you know, I pointed this out last time, in terms of people's habits, one of the things that we study in our marketing, you know, for the stations is what people's habits are, what they do. And, you know, you tend to be, you know, what we find is that you tend to be a person who uses the same type of place, okay? You get your gas at the same place, or, you know, you may go to the same deli or something along those lines. So one of our concerns is, yes, maybe this other station will allow somebody to gas up, you know, during those late night hours, but once that person becomes a customer at their, at that station, they're not going to come down the road to our station, you know, the hours that we're open, and then only go to the, our competitor, you know, when we're closed between twelve and five. You tend to, you know, pick a spot and you go to it because it's familiar, the people are familiar there, you, you know, you know where to find the things when you're in, in the store, so.
You know, and I would just note that for these hours on the graph, it seems that, you know, there's significant business, you know, maybe not in the middle, but by the time you add this significant business at the either end.
Right.
Then you're just talking a couple hours in between, so it doesn't make sense to close for those hours, so you might as well, I would-
So the question is, at this point, is, do, before we spend any more time on this, do, I want to take a vote of the board, and it has to be unanimous to move forward, as to whether this board wishes to reconsider the application that was previously denied for us to consider twenty-four hour access. It is not, this vote is not granting 24-hour access. Any, any further action by this board would require a public hearing. So, let me be very clear on that, whether we are not granting anything. We are just asking whether the board wants to move forward with a review and a reconsideration of this application.
Yes. I was going to say that, my suggestion that we move forward on reconsideration.
Especially in light of the denial of appeal 2639. So, we need to look at the appeal that was denied in 2000-
One.
Oh, no. Actually, it was October 2nd, 2000, and it was appeal number 2639. So, basically, the motion is to review the denial of that appeal because it's a continuation-
Okay.
Because that was denied at that time. So, we are picking it up from 2000.
I would call it a motion of reconsideration of the original decision.
Promote.
I don't like that.
Well, you agree to reconsider it, right? Is that a mo-
Do I? Aziz's motion.
Okay. I would second it.
Second? So, I'm going to go individual votes. I'm not going to make Rocco, since he's our newest member, go first. So, I'll start with Mary.
Aye.
Aziz.
Aye.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rocco? Aye. And myself, aye.
Okay.
So, we've set the stage. We will now consider your application. I think one, I mean, again, I think the information at this point is, is pretty clear. I think one of the questions I have is lighting. You know, lighting can be impactful to neighbors at night.
Okay.
So, can you get us a photometric plan so we understand whether the lighting is staying on your site, if it's spilling off, that sort of thing?
Absolutely.
You know, how attractive, can people on the Teconic see you at night if they're coming south, that sort of thing? Lighting is going to be important.
Okay.
The, I can't imagine you're generating a whole lot of noise at that hour. So, I don't, you know, I'm not too worried about that. But are there, anything else we're going to want some information on for us to be able to move forward with?
I think we need to study, but I, I would expect that you're not going to have to make any changes to the-
Well, one of the thi, one of the things that we can do, because obviously, we've got our lighting on up till midnight anyway.
Right.
We'll have, we have a project engineer. Let him look at it and see if there's, you know, how much splash we're getting off the site.
Right.
And see if there's some, you know, a recommendation. And then we'll gauge it with, when the public hearing comes in. I mean, if, if we've got neighbors who are saying, oh, I feel like I'm, you know, living next to JFK at night, you know, JFK Airport at night, we'll, we'll look at that and see if there's something we can do to-
Probably in relation to the neighbor's residential property.
Yes.
Since I think our biggest issue here is going to be listening to the public, I'm going to recommend that they can provide us that lighting, the photometric information. I think you should be able to get it in 30 days.
Yes.
So, if you can get it to us ahead of time would be helpful, but then we'll introduce it at the public hearing.
Okay.
So, I would recommend that we actually schedule the public hearing so that in September we can hear from, if there's any concerns from the neighbors. And again, we may be surprised and they may come out and say, oh, my God, thank God, we want this. So, we don't know. All right? But I think it's going to be important for us to hear from the neighbors.
And then there was, I think, a movement or some kind of a petition drive. What was, what has happened to that petition, right? By the neighbors who wanted the station to be open 24/7.
We, my client stopped that. We can get that going and see-
No, no, no.
Please.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure that, that lets us go one step at a time, okay?
Yeah.
So, motion to advertise.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
All right. So, Pam will give you your signs.
Okay.
He's gone the part, yeah, he's does, he's, he's got, you're going to need two signs. I don't think, I don't know if he can put one on the Teconic Parkway legally.
Right.
Okay? So, but he's got, there's two entrance ways to the, so I would put one on each side. Okay? So, because you're catching people who are coming, some people may just go, come from the west, get their gas and turn around. So, I think you need two signs, one at each entrance.
Okay.
Okay? Normally, you would have one inch, at least one entrance on each property line that has frontage, but like I said, you can't legally put one on the Teconic Parkway.
Right.
Okay?
Yes. We pick those up tomorrow. Is that okay?
Pam will give you your instructions, but otherwise, you can get them.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Just make sure up, they're up in time for the public hearing next month. We'll see you next month, okay?
Thank you. Good night.
All right. Item number 11, Appeal 3921. Reyes, Hector Reyes, 49 Harrigan Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a four-foot sideline variance for an existing 15-foot by 30-foot above-ground pool and a six-foot sideline variance for an existing 10-foot by 10-foot shed pursuant to Sections 194-95 and 194, 194-107B3 of the zoning ordinance. Mr. Reyes, good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. So, you have an existing above-ground pool. Did you get a permit to put the pool in?
I did not.
Yeah. Okay. So, that's why you're here, because you need to get the permit and you're, they're telling you that it's not where it should be.
I actually applied for a deck permit and when they came-
They found the pool.
Well, the pool was there. So, what I, what I, the pool was there when I purchased the house. What I did, I just-
Oh, okay. All right. That helps.
I took, I took-
It's very important to say that.
Yeah. I took-
Question, when did you purchase the house? You didn't say that.
Yeah. When did you purchase it?
2007.
Okay. So, you've had it for a while?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I actually been trying to do the deck, but then I found I had to do my survey. So, that kind of set me back because of money-wise.
Then you found out all this good news.
Exactly. So, I'm actually in a flood zone and so now I have to get a flood permit. That doesn't, it's not that bad.
All right. So, yeah, you need a flood plain permit. Has anybody reviewed that data yet?
Rick wants them to get the variance first.
Okay. Got it. Oh, we have pictures. So, this is the shed. Is this the front of your house? This is the, or is this?
Yeah. You would say that's, yeah.
Or is that your driveway?
That's the driveway, yeah.
Okay. All right. So, so the front of the shed faces the driveway?
Yes.
How old is this shed?
Pretty old. I just, what I did is I re-sided it because it was very bad-looking.
Okay.
So, I, I just re-sided it.
Trying to help it out, huh?
A little bit.
Well, I like the way you did the roofline. So, that actually gives you a little bit of cover for the stuff on the one side. So, all right. And so, this is the pool. Okay. All right. So, you bought the house 2007?
Yes.
Okay. And you think the pool went up when?
Not sure. What I found was a skeleton. So, what I did-
Oh, so the frame was there?
Yeah.
But it didn't have a liner and it, okay. Wasn't operational at the time that you bought it?
Yeah, it wasn't.
Okay.
And I wasn't aware I needed it.
But you felt because it was there, it was probably done legally?
Yeah. And then I started having kids, so.
He said that with such a smile on his face. The, when you got your title report, did it show up any violations on it? Again, I'm asking you for something 13 years ago. You may not remember. But your title report would have shown if there were any violations on the property?
I do not remember. No.
Okay.
I was a new buyer, so I was, I was very naive of how things should be done.
It, it happens to the best of us. Don't worry. Okay. So, so Rick, I'm not seeing in any of the building department record that there was ever an application for the pool. It looks like the house was built in 1976. There was a permit to put an enclosed deck in in 2006. There was a finished basement permit in 2006. That's probably to get ready to sell the house. And then, okay, so you got the COs issued on each of those. And then you came in in, in 2016, it appears, and tried to get a deck. The, oh, the square-foot pool deck. Okay. So, what's happened since 2016?
I didn't get it because I had to get a survey. And when I found out how much the survey was going to cost me, I didn't have the money for it.
Okay. All right.
So, I waited until I could save up for the survey. And I did an elevation survey also.
Okay. So, the pool's in the back of the property. It's not visible to your neighbors?
No. I don't believe so. It'll probably be visible to my neighbors to the left, but I don't think it's in their property line. It's, I guess, on the people-
Do they have any objection to you having that pool?
I don't think so.
I would speak to them before this?
They've never complained. They've never said anything to me. They're very quiet. They actually moved in after me, but no.
And so, the only way to fix this variance on this, on the shed is for you to actually bring the shed closer into the driveway?
Something like that.
But there's a lot of vegetation around the sheds, so I don't, so on this, on the side of the shed-
Yeah. There's, I really don't have, with, with the property line, there's really no neighbors there.
It appears to be really screened well for the neighbors.
Pretty blocked to me, yeah.
Yeah. It really, it's, all I got is woods back there for probably like 100, 150 yards.
Okay. I'm, I'm not worried about it. Motion to advertise?
Motion to advertise.
Second.
Here, pass these back to Pam. She wasn't here last month. That's why I have to. Okay. Okay, for public hearing. So, I have motion. I have a second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, what we'll do is we'll have your public hearing next month. If you have an opportunity to talk to your neighbors, if they want to give you a letter, that would be great. Otherwise, Pam will give you your sheet of information about your sign. You have to put a sign on your property so your neighbors know that there's going to be a public hearing about the, about this. Okay? And then we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Pam is up here. All right. Item number 12, 392, Appeal 3922 Morrow, Edward Morrow, 230 Creamery Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 364-square-foot variance for a proposed 1,520-square-foot detached garage to be located in front of his house pursuant to Section 194-107C of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Thank you. Hi. How are you?
Good. How are you?
The client could not make it tonight. He got called into work, so I'm here to discuss it with you guys. I guess the first thing we should attack is there's a front yard setback reduction or front yard setback.
Well, actually, the first issue I was going to bring up is why are you putting a detached garage in a front yard? It's not allowed by code.
It's given the unique shape of the lot. If you look at the site plan, there's very limited access to get to the rear yard from where the house is sitting on the funny shape.
230 Creamery Road. So, it's going to be on the, if I'm heading from-
You're heading to 82.
Out to 82. It's going to be on my left.
That's up the hill.
Right past Canterbury.
Correct.
Okay.
There's photographs included in the set that take pictures of, that are of the front of the house of where the lot, where the garage is going to go. And then from Creamery Road up the driveway, where the garage is going to be set.
Okay.
As well as from where the garage is going to be set down, looking-
So, you don't actually see the house from-
You do not see the house. It's tucked around the corner from-
So, in essence, a 1,520-square-foot garage is going to look like a house?
Hmm, it's only going to be 14 feet tall, so-
It's still going to look like, it's going to look like ranch. It's going to look like a house. 1,520 square feet?
I don't think, yeah, I really have a really good view of it.
No, no. I'm asking, if you can't see the house, then it may not be so bad because it's just going to look like this is the gar, this is the house.
Yeah. The road frontage isn't that great, so it's, yeah, it's kind of hidden because it's up a hill.
I was trying to help you out there. You weren't listening.
I hope, I sort of heard you, but, uh-
All right. Go ahead. Keep going.
I have images of the carport, of garage, that I brought in.
This is a weird piece of property.
Here's, here's the idea of what the car, the garage is going to look like. Yep. Pre-manufactured, pre-manufactured product, which will be assembled on-site.
So, is the 15?
The 1,500 square feet.
Yeah. Is that including the carports?
That includes the, that includes the side shit. Yes, that's the footprint of it.
Okay. That helps.
That's correct. And actually, that number's been reduced to-
Mike?
Oh, it's 1,520, yeah. So, it's been reduced because I already did it. Yeah, we, we decided to change the wood storage shed size on the side. It was originally 10 feet.
Put that to the other side.
It's on the north side, on the uphill side. Yeah, we put it on the, on the wrong side of the garage.
Okay.
Because the sun will treat the firewood the right way.
Can you make the side facing the road a little more house-looking, a couple of windows or something?
Yeah. We haven't actually finalized all the details because it, to do that, they want us to send them a check.
Okay. Because you can't see the house. I think if you focus on giving this the look of a residence-
Yes. We will, we'll have windows on one side.
But let's be-
We'll have plantings on the, what is that side?
Is there going to be a second floor?
There is not. It's only 14 feet.
Okay. So, there's no residential use?
It is not.
Okay, so there's no residential use, there's no business use in this proposed shed?
It's purely for two boats that are going to be put on it and his spare cars that sit on his property. Right now, all his cars and his boats during the off-season sit in his driveway, not that you see them because the driveway's serpentine, um, but he wants to put them in a structure. The color, I believe he had mentioned the color might be a gray, but he hasn't determined that yet, and we will know that.
Color of his house?
I think it's cream, actually, because it's a cream colored house.
Something to think about.
We will.
You're gonna put landscaping along the front of it as well?
Well, yep, along the, what is that side?
And is it gonna, is it gonna have an asphalt or a gravel driveway?
It's gonna have a gravel, so we don't do any more lot coverage. And, so we're looking for that, that's the first thing, I guess, right, the front yard.
Yeah, the property, the property, I've never seen a, a puzzle property.
No, neither, yeah.
It's like a puzzle.
We do, did I include the survey from the original surveyor from Oracle? Because there's a survey, an original survey, this is the architectural survey.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a survey.
Yeah, we have two surveys.
Oh, well, we have the plan, yeah, we have the, okay, I do have pictures and a building report here. So it is a light brown color, the house?
Correct.
Can you match the?
We can't match this, we can't match the siding of the house because it's hor, I believe the house is horizontal, and I don't believe the company sells horizontal siding for the pre-manufactured, it's only vertical.
You can't see the house.
But we can match the colors.
Yeah, we can match the colors.
Yeah, we can match the colors.
This house was actually only constructed in two thousand and thirteen.
Correct.
So it's a fairly new house, okay. Rick, you had no other issues? There's no open building permits, there's no violations, so.
Motion to advertise?
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, so, we're gonna wanna see, focus, can we, if we can see that side of the building, what you're gonna see from the road would be important, landscaping that side of the building.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Hey, just make it look nice, that's all.
No problem.
Okay, item number thirteen, appeal three nine two three Riggins.
Just one.
Yeah, go ahead.
The setback from the yard, is that appropriate? Does he need a variance for that too?
That's, that's one of the other options, that was one of the other things to discuss.
Okay.
Side yard setback reduction?
Side yard?
Side, well, we're call, we're believing it's called side yard, the.
Yeah, it looks, it's a, it's the line behind the garage.
We couldn't get, well, I had to talk to the planning board?
Which the garage is sideways, so it is, it's a side yard.
It was up like that, yeah.
Yeah.
So they only have it ten feet away, I think.
Correct, we're placing it ten feet away, um, the reason for doing that is, one, to hold it back away from the road even farther, and then also the land starts to fall off, so we're trying to escape.
What's behind it?
Trees, probably thirty.
Where's the ne, closest residence or the?
Probably forty or fifty feet away, there's a whole bunch of trees.
Not that far.
There's a whole bunch of trees in the background, if I can get them, I can get measurements to the houses.
That would be helpful to hear.
But you have to put that in for the.
For the variance?
Okay.
To advertise it.
So does it, it needs a side yard variance?
Correct.
It needs ten feet or it has ten feet and it needs the twenty-five?
We're asking for a ten and a half foot side yard variance.
So you need eleven foot?
Yes, eleven foot, that's, uh, no.
He's doing it wrong, you're only ten feet away.
We're asking for fourteen feet.
Fourteen feet variance.
I always get those backwards.
You're ten and a half feet away.
Yep.
Right.
So you're not eleven feet, so you need the fifteen foot variance.
Fifteen feet.
He needs a fifteen foot side yard variance.
And the reason to do that is, we're just trying to avoid putting retaining walls along the grade because the grade starts to drop off, and we just didn't wanna add more disturbance.
Is that what you're saying?
I'm sorry?
As you go forward to the road, it goes up?
The grade falls down, down towards the road, so we're, we're putting the garage far, farther up the property to try to, one, stay away from the road, and then two, try to get away from the slopes.
Oh, that is one weird shaped lot.
Yeah.
Wow. I mean, and even the way it's got this little sidearm too to it.
Yeah, why it has that, I have no idea.
It was, it was when that, um.
Because it had to get the acreage, probably.
No, it was when that shade, sag broke, the development behind it, all that property got subdivided, and this was like the pieces that were left.
Yeah.
Essentially.
That's.
Because the property used to have two lots, I guess.
I know, I saw that somewhere.
I'm assuming Rocco may wanna see that.
They've seen, uh, odd shaped lots, but this is the oddest.
Yeah, that's really strange. Okay, so we're okay with, okay for public hearing, but you're amending it to include the side yard variance?
Correct.
Jim, you made the second, you're amending it?
Second, yes.
Okay, so all in favor with the amendment for the side yard variance?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now Pam will give you your instructions to your sign.
Thank you.
All right, we will see you next month. Pam, that is Rick's information for your file. Okay, so now we're gonna go to item number thirteen, appeal three nine two three Riggins, Janet Riggins, one thirty-four Jensen Road Homes is requesting a three foot sideline variance for an existing twenty-four foot by twenty-four foot detached garage, which was built in front of the dwelling in nineteen eighty-five pursuant to section one oh four dash one oh seven C of the zoning ordinance. You are not Janet.
No, I am not, I am her, I am her spouse.
That's fine, no problem.
She's not too great on her feet, so I'm gonna.
When you're reading and you suddenly look up and you're like, nope, that doesn't match.
I'm not, I'm not Edna either.
Maybe you are Janet, I, you know. All right, anyway, you have a house and you have a garage, when did you buy this property?
In the seventies.
So you put up this garage?
It's, it's a shed, really, but you.
It's a shed?
Yeah, yeah, it's never had a car in it.
Does it have a concrete floor?
Yes, it does.
Does it have a garage door?
Uh, ye, yes, it does.
Okay. Do you store any kind of motor vehicles in there?
Just for lawn tractor, lawn equipment.
Okay, twenty-four foot by twenty-four foot, I think it's safe to call it a garage.
And I just wanted to say, we're here because we had a tornado hit our house, uh, in May of, uh, two thousand and eighteen, uh, and.
Wow.
And we actually got information from, from you folks.
The microburst, that's what, okay, the microburst.
And so we had a hundred thirty mile per hour winds, uh, and, uh, my neighbor's trees, I guess they're, some were his and some were on our lines, so I take some responsibility, but, uh, they came down on top of that, that shed.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh.
So you wanna rebuild it?
That weekend, we lost power for a week, and, yeah, you know the whole story, I mean, Beacon through Connecticut was a mess. And the reason that I'm here is because the contractor that's worked on our house for years, and he's phenomenally teaches and everything in Westchester, he wound up getting mauled by a dog, his own dog, and has gone through multiple hand operations, and it's a small outfit, so we waited until the summer.
He was ready.
To do it, and when he, you know, he was back in shape, and this is when we found out that this structure had no CO, no record of a CO. So, but, but since that weekend of the trees coming down, sizable trees, I mean, feet across, uh, it punched holes in the roof of this, and it's just had a, frankly, a free tarp from Harbor Freight nailed to it by the tree people, uh, all winter, and I was hoping to avoid not having to go through another winter with holes in the roof if I could, and when I found out that there was no CO, I saw my.
Were you able to just re, literally restore the roof, or do you have to rebuild?
We haven't done anything because once I came here to do.
But what I'm, what I'm saying now, at this point, are, do you actually have to rebuild the whole thing, or do you?
Yes, the roof has to be, has to be replaced.
Just the roof?
Yes. Oh, no, the structure's, the structure's okay.
That's what I was asking.
Yes, we'd like to actually cosmetically put some dormers on it just like for aesthetics, because it's.
But you're not adding a second floor?
No, 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 it's only six feet, I know we're not even raising the beam, the beam got broken, but we're not, we don't wanna do that.
Just making sure there's no accessory apartment or any other use.
No, it can't, you can't even walk up there.
Yeah, they're clear about that in their application.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, you can't walk up there.
Good, okay.
And there's nothing up there, to be honest with you, there hasn't been since it was built, to be honest with you.
Your neighbors have any objections, or they?
I have one neighbor, he owns both sides.
Okay, oh.
And, and talking about unusual pieces of property, if you have the survey, mine is tier shaped, literally tier shaped. Uh, my entrance to my ha, uh, driveway is at the very point of the tier, and we live on a, we live on a peninsula, so that basically our house is on, on the water, because we live on a lake, so the house is actually on the edge of the water, so that there is no, I've always considered the water between the water and our house the front yard, and come to find out, you, I think you folks call that my backyard, but, I mean, it's, there's, there would be no place to put a, anything.
So this raises a couple of other questions, though. Because there are structures, like a dock or a deck or something, out at the waterfront there, right?
Uh, ye, yeah.
Okay, who built those?
Um, I think they were, they were put in when, they were put in when, uh, the house was soon after the house was built, I believe.
Because we don't think those have a permit.
Nineteen.
Are you the first owner of the house?
I am.
Janet is.
I am, and I was widowed, so.
Okay.
You sucked him into this.
All right, let me think now. Fifty years ago.
Fifty years ago.
Yes.
Was it in the sixties or?
I, I, yeah. Yeah, I'm in my thirties now.
It depends, remember I said earlier that zoning came into place in East Fishville in nineteen sixty-three?
Right.
So if they were built before nineteen sixty-three.
Uh, they weren't, they were not.
I graduated high school in sixty-three, so it was shortly thereafter, maybe four years after that, the house was built.
Nineteen seventy.
So they had a permit for the shed.
Okay, you tried doing a, an addition to the house in nineteen ninety-one, or you did an addition to the?
Yeah, that has a CO.
No, it doesn't. It has a permit that's been renewed like twenty-one times.
No, no, it's got a CO, it was, your, your building inspector came out and, and gave us closure on this.
You think it does?
And I don't, I can't remember his name, uh.
It was renewed twenty-one times?
It was renewed twenty-one times, that's what I'm seeing here.
Yes, 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 because.
The garage was issued a.
If you want an explanation for that, I'd be very happy to give it to you.
I'd be curious, just because.
Sure. I'm a dentist, okay, go with my hands. Um, our first contractor that we hired, um, literally took us for a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay, and that's, that's a lot of feelings, okay? And so, uh, basically, I took it upon myself the first five, seven, eight, ten years to literally, um, recoup that hundred thousand dollars and do, uh, do the work myself.
Okay.
So, uh, we became a familiar face down here renewing.
Every six months?
Every six months, renewing it faithfully.
Okay, sorry.
And I did get, I did get inspections, some of them got lost.
Sorry, the, it was co, it was issued, the CO was issued in, um, March fourteenth, two thousand and seven, no, sorry, October twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen.
But some of the inspections.
Permit request in two thousand and seven.
I know, it's amazing, people say I'm the most patient woman in the, in Dutchess County.
You did get it.
But some of the inspections were, in all honesty, some of the inspections were lost along the line.
Okay, so what's pending is the shed repair or the garage repair, whatever it is that we're talking about. Contractor brought in detailed plans, so you're, okay, so.
So you asked me about our neighbors, uh, on that tier shaped, uh, one side that the damage, the trees came down, the damaged side, uh, uh, my neighbor on the other side who has a house, uh, owns that property, is pretty, it's, it's an unbuildable piece, it's, uh, it's all rock, it's raised rock, and it's all ledge rock, and frankly, uh, it's been unbuildable, uh, for fifty years, and nobody's been able to build on it.
So here's some pictures of the property.
So, uh, it's actually the gentleman who's on the other side of us, his trees and, and some of mine came down and actually crushed the top of the, of the, uh, outside garage. Now, the setback, uh, this, the first I saw about a setback was tonight when I read, read the agenda, so I had no idea that there's, that, I have no idea that there is a violation of a setback, uh, when it was built in nineteen eighty-five, as far as I know, it was twenty-five feet, but maybe it wasn't, I don't know, you'll have to correct me looking back, but it was built in nineteen eighty-five. It is, uh, I'm, from the summer survey, it says twenty-seven point one feet off that property line. Now, that is the unbuildable side, but still, um, if that's where we have to start, that's where we have to start.
The garage is twenty-seven, what's the shed, you have a shed or something?
No, that shed is twenty-seven point one, it's on the survey, but to the corner. If we're talking about the same structure.
There's something between what you're calling a shed, the big shed and the garage.
Oh, that, that little thing is a, was a, is an Agway special that's ready to come down.
Well, that's, might be where the setback requirement is, is a violation.
Oh, I have no idea.
I agree with you, the survey.
Actually, that could be, because of the, the, I don't know.
We're gonna call it a garage.
I don't know if you came out or not, but, okay, because the, um, the building inspector met with my builder, uh, and, um, he said that, uh, that was a problem, I said, not a problem, I said, well.
It's gonna be gone.
We'll be very happy to take that down.
Okay.
It's on my bucket list, and I'll just do it sooner than later, then.
Yes.
So, so this, um.
So then, this, the, the shed, the actual shed, the twenty-four by twenty-four is not, is not out of compliance? Is that, is that my assumption at this point? Do we have a proper setback for that?
Um, again, for your, your survey, it's showing multiple structures, one is a fifteen foot frame shed, then a fifteen something frame garage.
Oh, that one, oh, you know what, you're, you're right, that one store.
Wooden deck that's also in the neighbor's property from what I can see.
The little one on the very bottom here no longer exists, that was, that was, existed.
Okay.
My wife originally had a horse when I met her.
Okay.
Uh, and then she gave the horse away, and that was the remnants of a, of an open pony stall.
So basically, this, uh, so this, um, the twelve feet, the, the shed that is only twelve feet away.
Yeah, that's, that, that's gone.
It's gone, okay.
Yeah, that's gone.
So because it's on the survey, so we, I'm worried about it.
And the other little one that you see there is ready to go.
Okay, so that is twenty-seven feet, so that's sufficiently different, and just further away from the, I'm assuming that's a property line.
Yes.
So it's twenty-seven some.
I'm sorry.
Twenty-seven point one.
Oh, twenty-seven point, yeah, mine is not very clear, uh, so that's a frame garage that you are trying to repair right now?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Now, you have this wooden deck that goes into your neighbor's property.
It's a wooden deck that goes into the water. That's what you're looking at.
Is that, it says stone wall?
That's why I asked Pam.
No, but it says stone wall up there.
I asked Pam.
Oh, that, that wall's underground.
It goes, but that goes out into the water, right?
Yeah, that's, that's all water.
Yeah, this, there's a beach here, and so he's got a deck.
I don't have the beach part, I mean.
That, that.
I know, Pam, that's why, I started looking at this, and I said, it doesn't look like what I saw in the, in my.
That's just Long Island, that's like Long Island Beach Day and I was dumped there.
This is the actual survey, guys, and so there's, he's got a beach on his property, and he's got one wood deck that's half on the beach and half into the water, and then there's another wood dock, it's labeled on your survey, that just starts at the beach and goes into the water.
Now, that, that original wood dock that you see sticking straight out from the beach, that was built at the time the house was built.
Okay.
That was back in nineteen seventy, I guess, or so, and it's still there.
And is the wood deck still there?
Yeah, we call it a deck dock because it's like half in the water, half on the land.
I agree.
Yes.
So, but neither one of these are permits, right? Not to, according to your record? So.
I don't think we do docks.
We don't, you don't think you, it's a structure?
It's on the ground, almost like a patio.
I, I have contacted the DEC at times, and they said they had no problem with it, but.
The wood dock.
More like a DEC permit, not a building permit.
The wood dock extends beyond his property line.
Well, it's, it's into.
It's in the water.
Property that we all, we all own, we, it's, it's part of a neighborhood.
But it's not on your property, so if you tell me it's not your wood dock?
It's anchored on, it's anchored on, it's anchored at the very edge of my beach.
Right, but it says it, it's anchored, so it says, it shows that it's anchored on your property line.
Yep.
So it is, technically, it's not your wood dock. I don't know that anybody else would use it, I'm just saying, it's technically not on your property.
Everybody's got them, that's all I can tell you, and it's just, they're all anchored the same way, they're right at the edge of the water.
And then on the water, it's floating on something?
Well, no, this one's got poles that go down.
It's got poles down.
It's got footings.
Two, that's two inch galvanized poles, like six of them, that go down in there.
They were put in for the lake on everyone's house.
Yeah.
No one really owns them.
No, and some of them are, some of them are floating and some of them are, are anchored.
Okay, so as long as we recognize that it's not on your property, I, we technically should make you remove it, I don't wanna make you do that if you're not acknowledging that it's not on your property, it's, could be somebody else's. Now, we still have to deal with the wood deck, though, because that's labeled a deck, not a dock.
Yeah, half's, half is.
What?
Attached to the house.
No, this is the one that sits on the beach and goes in half, it's half.
I didn't have this when I went out, so I don't know.
Yeah, I would say probably half or two.
Oh, you have a copy of it?
Section.
Okay, yeah, so that one set is showing that part of it is in the water beyond his property line, and the other part is on his property.
Yeah, I thi, I think that this is a little deceiving.
Not attached to the house.
Not attached to the house.
And it's not a structure for us to permit.
If a playset is a structure, you can't tell me this isn't a structure.
Building code about docks, I don't believe, I'd have to look.
Yeah, I think we should look into this.
I haven't read that section of the building, but I'm not, but I would think it would be a structure.
Uh, it's gotta be a structure, it's just a matter of whether it needs a permit or not. What's the size of this deck? It's not labeled, wait, is it?
It's a first for me, I.
Yeah, it's not labeled.
Issue a permit for a dock.
The dock is smaller, but you know what the size of the deck is?
This is bigger, this is probably twice the size of that little wooden dock, um.
And if that's twenty point nine feet here, that's just that one side.
Yeah, that's actually, it's actually a little, it's actually.
Twenty by thirty.
It's actually now a little smaller than, it's, you know, it's, the wood's been replaced, and it's been, been made smaller, the smaller one. Uh, actually, this has been made smaller too, to be honest with you, that step, part that sticks out, that you see, um, that whole section's been taken off.
So it's getting rebuilt without permits, too?
No, it's not being rebuilt, it was rebuilt years back.
It's repaired, okay.
It's the old, it's the old pressure-treated wood, so it's not anything new.
All right.
Um, but it's, I would say it's probably two-thirds of the size that it is there, and two-thirds of it hangs over, more over the water than, than on the land. It's really just anchored on the, the edge of the beach, because we have snakes and things come up through the.
How do we deal with this?
Do you have an HOA there?
Oh, uh, association, yes.
They approve your docks?
Sure.
They approve all of them, yeah.
Placement.
Yeah.
So I think.
We want a letter from the HOA that?
I guess, it's something I'd have to look into, I don't think we require a permit.
I don't know if I've ever actually given one before to anyone, but.
The problem is, they wanna get their shed, they, they wanna get this garage rebuilt.
I understand, you wanna clean it up.
We wanna clean it up, though, because then, we also have a greenhouse, is that greenhouse still there?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And that was built at the time the, the original house was built, too.
We're now talking about a greenhouse that is supposed to be from your rear yard. Fifty feet, thirty feet?
Again, it's tiny, and it's just like from Agway.
From the rear yard? It's a greenhouse, it's a structure.
But it's also not permanently anchored, there's no concrete floor, it's on rare.
So it can move?
It's on some railroad ties, I did move, I did move it, yes, I have moved it.
Fifteen feet for a shed, so.
Oh, it, okay, because if you consider it a shed fifteen feet?
Yeah.
That's where you're going, okay, so then we're good, we can leave that one alone, we'll consider that a shed.
Greenhouse shed.
Well, these structures have been here, obviously, for a long time.
They've been there forever.
I don't wanna make you, if, nobody's complaining about them, and, and, you know, it's, it's just silly to do that.
No, but also, on the other hand, if there are any of these things that can be cleaned up, we would like to clean it up.
Right, so it.
Well, we maintain them, we maintain them, they're not like falling down.
Correct.
This is the only one that we need to resolve.
Clean up if there's any other zoning issues, we'll make sure you take care of everything.
If we put in for a variance, just to keep them moving here, put in for a variance for the deck with a zero backyard setback, so it requires the full setback, we're okay, right? And they just have to figure out what that you, building department has to figure out what you'd want to do for permit-wise. But we would be clearing their property for them to have that prop, that, that on their.
So we, yeah, we'd have to check.
But I, I'm still going to ask you to get a letter from your HOA that acknowledges that it's okay for this deck to extend into the water.
Okay.
Okay? Both of them, just to be clear.
Yeah, because if you have an HOA, then they do have these, their own rules and regulation of who can be on the lake or on, and what kind of motorboats or canoes or whatever.
No motorboats.
Okay, whatever, I mean, they have a requirement, so.
That's why, because they have requirements that don't allow them.
And so that's when we need to know what their requirements are, so we'll incorporate.
Only three people in East Fishville on this lake, everyone else is from Kent and Pauling.
Okay.
Okay.
It sounds like when they built the house, they put that dock on everyone's property.
They did.
Yeah, yeah, they put a canoe.
To, to move this forward, so we'll put the deck, the deck on for a, if it's a.
Fifteen foot, um.
A deck requires a twenty-five, no, this is a rear lot. It's gonna be thirty.
It's gonna be rear, so it's gonna be fifty.
That's what I thought, okay, so the deck actually requires a fifty-foot variance.
Okay.
All right, so we, we have to add the deck for a fifty.
Sixty-foot variance because it goes into the water.
No.
No, no, no.
They're just gonna get a letter from the HOA that acknowledges that this deck extends onto the HOA property.
Will we still have to go for a variance for the deck?
They can, they can make a legal arrangement to do that.
You can apply for it, we'll just make sure that it's not an issue, we'll grant the variance for the.
Okay, and like I said, most of it's in the water.
Right.
Seriously, I mean.
It's, it's, it's pretty clear here, that's fine.
I mean, or half, I mean, half in the water, half in the land, I mean.
Okay.
Whatever, okay, so that's, that's, no, but again, then we have this garage, the, the frame thing, so you're gonna rebuild the same, no, you're gonna rebuild the garage on the same footing, basically?
Well, I mean, the garage is, the all four walls are fine.
Pardon me?
The, the all four walls are fine. It just, it just broke, it broke a lot of the rafters and it broke the main beam, the trees broke the main, and I got holes punched in the roof.
Something, too, they want to make it more aesthetically.
Motion to advertise.
Second.
Uh, we, we did want to put a couple of dormers on it for aesthetics.
That's fine.
Yep, that's fine.
Not a problem.
They're fake, nobody's gonna live up there, nobody's gonna walk up there.
Thank you, that's the important thing.
Not even my oldest daughter.
Okay, you are good, you're scheduled for a public hearing for next month. If you see Pam at the end, she'll give you your instructions, you do have to put a sign on your property, please, okay? And then please get the letter from the HOA just acknowledging those.
And what do I do with that letter?
Deck docks, if you can get it to Pam.
Okay.
Anytime before the next pub, the next, before the next meeting.
Okay.
So we're doing the.
Thank you, doctor. Thank you.
Yes.
Good.
Okay, so what does he need to be in compliance with today? Thirty feet.
Right.
Okay.
We're good.
We're good. All right, uh, can I get those pictures back so I can give them to Pam for her record? Thank you. Yep, have a good night, evening. And Rick, for the record, it's very helpful to get these pictures from you, so we appreciate that. Okay, item number fourteen, appeal three nine two four Fitzgerald, Mary Kay Fitzgerald, thirty-nine Moonlight Drive Store, Moonlight Drive Stormville, is requesting a four-foot sideline variance for a proposed wraparound front porch pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety-three of the zoning ordinance. Pam, you're missing the word section. Hi.
Hi.
So you are proposing a wraparound deck that its, its real purpose, aside from giving you some pleasure of being able to sit there, is to improve the aesthetic view of your house. And we've seen this before, where sometimes the front of a house is very plain. Okay, so we do have some pictures that will help us to see what we're looking at. So you have actually like a portago that comes out and then it's.
Yeah, it's like a, it's like a stoop.
So you're just gonna build this deck right around it?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. That makes sense, you're gonna let Mary see and then I'll pass the pictures down to you guys.
That makes. Yep.
Yeah, it's, pictures very clearly would tell you what, any issues on this property? And that CC issued, CO issued, so it looks like she's got. There's a pending application for above-ground pool?
Yes, it just was put in and now the electric is going in.
Okay, cool.
Yep, we're all good.
It was just issued, I'll just second, so you're good.
I'm good, we're good.
Good, thank you for doing it with the permit.
Mm-hmm, oh, I do every, like, I learned, this is my second home, I learned.
Okay, motion advertise. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We will see you next month.
That's good.
Pam will give you your instructions, you have to put a sign on your property, please. All right, and last, last but not least, oh, no, wait a second, sorry, no, that is last.
Yeah, that is last, yeah.
Last, I have multiple people here. Okay. Um, item number fifteen, appeal three nine two five William Tell Hardware, Dave Tell of William Tell Hardware, eight twenty-seven Route eighty-two, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a ten-foot sideline variance for our proposed building, a seven-foot variance for parking circulation, nine percent variant, point nine percent variance for the floor area ratio, a three-foot height variance and a variance to the parking requirements in order to allow six less parking spaces than required pursuant to section one ninety-four dash seventeen, one da, ninety-four dash eighteen, and one ninety-four dash three sixty-one of the zoning ordinance. All right, take us through what you are proposing here, please.
Good evening, my name's Carrie Tell. We're asking for what we're asking for because we would like to rebuild our hardware store.
Okay.
In the same location, and we'd like to use the same foundation on the same footprint.
Okay.
The building will be a little bit different, a lot different from the outside. But, uh, the, you know, we want to add some height for storage, a second floor that will not be occupied by anybody, it won't be shopping space, it'll be purely for storage. There, there's a lot of, of reasons that I guess we have to use that foundation, basically. I realize that it's basically on the property line, so that's, you know, I guess, one of the biggest problems. We need to reuse that foundation because if we move the foundation in any, first of all, financially, it's very expensive, right, to replace. Secondly, if we move it in any direction, it affects everything else. So to make the space work for a hardware store and for what we've used it for, for thirty-some odd years, we would need it to basically be in that space, on that footprint, the way we're asking for it.
Okay, the, let's, let's start with, um, this was an existing hardware store.
It was.
Everybody has been in there at some point or, or another. Parking in the front is an issue, um, and if we just use the next door property as a, as the reason, they actually can easily accommodate the back and forth rows of parking there because their building has a sidewalk in front, is setback a little bit more. Your building is a little bit closer to the front, so you don't have that extra footage that allows people to safely back up without going into the parking space behind it. So that's part of the circulation issue that you're asking for relief on.
Correct.
Yes. Did you want to say something, you were?
No, I'm just, I'm zero interiant, I'm the architect, I was gonna go through the explanation for some of the stuff, but we can answer questions.
Oh, if, no, if you want to go through, that's fine.
Well, just the, uh.
I prefer that you actually took us through what you're looking for, so.
The, uh, the ten-foot side yard, we're gonna be building, we, we prefer to, we need to build on that same footprint. So we're about a foot off the side property line, um, if you look at the survey. But we're gonna ask for a ten-foot, uh, variance because that's the total that we need there, but we're gonna try and keep the building a foot away. We're really not clear on that, the survey shows a kind of tapering along that line, about, from like about a ten inches to maybe about a foot in the back. So we're asking for the ten-foot variance on the side property line so that we can build on the same footprint. The seven-foot variance for the parking circulation in the front, you're correct, we, 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 we kept the stalls at eighteen feet, which is required by code, but we, we're short on the circulation lane. Now, we can make the stalls, you know, maybe seventeen feet and add a couple of feet to the circulation lane, but it's still gonna be kind of narrow.
And, and frankly, a lot of people that pull into hardware stores are driving trucks, so that.
Well, we're gonna, we could specify that the trucks are parked on the side, which we, we were able to get the eighteen feet uh, in, in a twenty-four, close to a twenty-four foot circulation lane on the side of the building.
You have twenty-three and a half, you're twenty-three feet, seven inches.
Right, so we need three-inch variance on that. But we can, well, you know, we could talk about that.
Inches or?
Pardon? Twenty-four feet is required, we've got twenty-three feet, seven inches, right, so we need a five-inch variance or something like that. But we could talk about, you know, eliminating one of those circuit, one of those rows of parking in the front, if that's where you're going with this, but then we'd be asking for a, you know, we'd be, we'd be, um, asking for a lot more variance on terms of quantity or the number of parking spaces. We could talk about that, if you want, I can go through the rest of this and then come back to that.
Also concerned about, if you don't mind, I'm also concerned about your ability to actually use that hammerhead along the side property line and actually back out. I don't think you can, how do you back out of those last two parking spaces?
Well, the, the circulation lane is, is twenty-four feet, that's typically enough for a car.
No, no, I'm talking about the, 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 keep going, keep going, the one right next to Anthony's, to the, uh.
What's right here?
Oh, the other side. Those, the hammerhead up there, how do those people in those last two parking spaces back out?
You know, we can always eliminate a couple and shift these down and give them more space to back up.
Because that's one of the things you did often in the summertime, was you had stuff stored out there anyways, you had displays of, you often put displays of stuff there.
Where we would put things, um, were more, yeah, up in, up in here, actually. So this is where we would have things displayed, in the past, yes, we had things displayed directly in the parking spaces.
Somehow, somehow we need you to move the display back so that you guys are speaking into the microphone, please. All right, right now you're blocking the microphone.
Okay, so, uh, we, we did in the past keep things, uh, right up front in parking spaces, et cetera. I do under.
It might be helpful if you would just move a chair up and just use a chair as an, as a easel?
I do understand that it's, um.
Oh, maybe not so easy.
That you're not supposed to have things in the parking spaces, right?
Well, I was just saying, I mean, as a practical matter, I mean, on the back left, we have kerosene tanks and an LP tank, you're gonna be selling kerosene there, is that what you want?
Our intention is to have the same type of setup, but obviously updated, so we would have kerosene and propane just as we do now. It's affected business that we don't have kerosene where we are, we weren't able to get a tank back there. With the, with the situation that we have, uh, the space that's there, you know, I think that, that we have the ability to get both of those tanks there, the question is more, you know, the parking, once we take the spaces.
That's my question, can you move those back somewhere and get?
The problem with moving them back is, um, they're very close to the property line and then behind, the property line is on an angle. Uh, behind that property is the, is the water and, and sewer and such, they will, you know, you can't put any tanks on top of anything like that.
Can't build on the easement. The, uh, the purpose of the propane and the kerosene is in emergency, there's, there's an emergency generator in the back of the building. When power goes out, customers come to the hardware store for things like batteries and stuff like that, kerosene and, you know, and so on, propane tanks and so on, so, um, that was one of the issues that came up, or that was one of the things that we, that was always in the store and then I, and we moved temporarily to, to Unity Plaza, we have emergency generator there also.
Okay.
But moving those tanks back, we start to get into the angle of the, of the property line. There's a fence right at that point, the back of the tanks, uh, that sort of like locks off or closes off this area after hours. That's where the outdoor storage is.
So the intention would be for the, for the fence to be similar to the way it, it was in the past, maybe not the same look, but the, the same function. It was either at one time a sliding, um, function and at another time it was, you know, open to outward or inward either way. Um, and then at another time we had one single gate, the purpose was to keep the back, the propane tanks, the kerosene, any merchandise that was kept out back to keep it all obviously locked up at night and away from, you know.
Secure.
Back to the parking, is this the same footprint of parking that you had before?
Yes.
Because it looks the same.
It is.
It is.
Yeah, in the past, you had the parking that was basically, um, dirt, I mean, wasn't blacktopped. So are you blacktopping the whole area now?
We, our, our, our parking lot is blacktopped to the curbing, so I think it is blacktopped, we are gonna, you know, redo the blacktop. We're gonna blacktop the rear of the building, too, which never was in the past because there, but there was a, a well and a, you know, a septic back there, so we couldn't pave that in the past.
When people were pulling into that, uh, dirt area, that was not your property, it was a neighbor's property that people were backing into on the, next to the.
Right, on the left side of the building.
Okay.
So I, we, we did pave up to the property line, but obviously we would redo the paving there.
Okay.
I just remember, I mean, I went there often and I, it was tough if you had to park in the front with a full-size pickup, I'll tell you.
Have you had any conversation at all with the property next door about doing some cross-access easements here or?
We, that is our intention, is to have a conversation with, and we're, what we're doing is exploring all the options as far as the curb, the walkways, any breaks in that before we approached the neighbor with any.
We're, we're showing an opening in the fence here at the end of the sidewalk.
Okay.
So if the arrangement with the neighbor happens, then people can park here and walk through this opening into that.
Yeah, because their greater use is in the evenings when you're not necessarily open, okay?
Exactly.
And, and your greater use is in the mornings when they're not necessarily open, so.
Complements each other, that is true.
Yeah, it really would and it would help your parking, I'd rather you had a safer parking arrangement but had access to other parking. Okay, so again, there's value to both parties to be able to do that. They would probably lose two, at least two, if not three, parking spaces to do that because they have parking head-on along that.
I think, uh.
They have parking along that side there.
They do.
It might, it might not be that far, you're right, it might not be that far forward because they do have the access out, but there's a little.
There, I think there are two parking spaces before the edge of the curb, so, again, these are the things that we're trying to put into place before I have the discussion, I wanted to go there with all the options available.
I mean, you get, just because of the fact that the, the building was there, the foundation is existing, you know, there's certain amount of working with, understanding the fact that you couldn't work with the existing foundation as opposed to requiring that you just push it back. But pushing it back ultimately impacts the entire rest of the site. What are these pallets, racking system, what is that gonna look like? I mean.
It's, uh, that would be similar to what you see like in Home Depot or, or Lowe's where they have exterior, exterior steel.
Are they screening?
On a much stau, on a much smaller scale, there would be some type of barrier behind it, in between that and the fence that we're asking for.
We're showing.
Again, let me be clear, I'm putting, wearing a planning board hat, I, this is not the right board to ask that, but the, we'll leave that for the planning board to let them decide what that's supposed to look like.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, I, that's, I, I need to keep this board focused on what we need to do, including myself. So, um, I don't know, guys, what do you want to do?
Um, I mean, I think, uh, is it, are you in a urgency to have this thing move forward or can you come back for another review next month?
So the thing is that we, we are on a timed schedule based on the fact that we are in a five-year, with a five-year option agreement in the plaza. We do have to let them know by June, uh, whether or not we're staying, we would need to already be building to make that happen. We would need to be building way before June, so, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, but, but you want to get, be able to get in the ground this year.
Yeah, that's the intention, is, is to move forward, you know, as, as quickly as we can, which is why we approached it this way. There's a lot, um, there's a lot to go into it, so.
It doesn't look like there's a lot of changes as opposed to the old setup, structure, parking, everything.
Yeah, but again, we're trying to make sure that, again, for example, if they ask the neighbor, uh, the, the next business to allow access, that will have some impact on both, both properties.
That will make it better.
It'll, but again, that will be part of our public hearing conversation.
Mm-hmm, right, go ahead.
So, so I mean, again, you know, you're already using the same footprint, so you're not making any changes and your lot is very, you know, so you really don't have much movable area, so you're only like at the back, you have only like eighteen-foot clearance, so even if you move your slab back by two feet, you're already losing like from eighteen to sixteen feet or whatever the number is. So you're already losing just to make accommodated parking up front.
And it doesn't even, still meet the circulation requirement, so.
So, so I would just go for the, let's go motion with, to advertise and let the public come and comment and then if you have to postpone the, I mean, if you need to have a couple of public hearing, we'll do that.
Okay.
Um, Michelle Robbins, who was the reviewer, we were, we're only in sketch plan with the planning board right now, so nothing's official. But you know Michelle Robbins, there reviewer?
She's our town planner.
She sent a letter and, and I, we need to, uh, modify the application because she outlined a couple more variances that we need. In addition to what, in addition to what I talked about here.
Okay.
Uh, she says that there's a variance required for the outdoor storage because I guess the zoning doesn't allow outdoor storage.
You're, what dist, what district are you in?
Pardon me?
What's your zoning district? If you're B one, outdoor storage is not allowed.
B two.
B two.
You're B two, only B three allows the outdoor storage or I, industrial zones? I think it's B.
Okay, if Michelle has said it, we, we can include it, it's not a problem, we can include it.
All right, so she also mentioned that, uh, because of the pallet racking, we, we need a side yard variance on that also because we've shown that against the, the side property line.
How much of a variance do you need, though?
Pardon?
How much of a variance do you need?
Ten feet.
So, in essence, the, the rackings are not, the racking's not allowed at all, to be able to put it in at all, you need a variance for the full amount.
Correct.
The pallet racking can be moved off of the property line to some degree, but for, as a matter of functionality, it can't come, you know, it can't come the full ten feet or we wouldn't be able to operate in the backyard space.
We've already reduced it from what we've previously shown plus turned this one at an angle so we're keeping it off of the right-of-way. Because, because this one was previously shown parallel to the property line, so we've turned that at an angle and pulled this one back. The, the space in the middle is for a, a forklift to get in there and maneuver around and take stuff off the racks. So we just need to add those two, the outdoor storage and then the side yard variance for the storage, so we'll make our.
Question is, are we asking, we're gonna go for ten feet, we're gonna go for nine feet, we'll go for eight feet?
I'd go for ten feet, I mean, because, especially when you're putting a, you know, moving a.
But it's eight wood, it's eight-foot wide racking.
I would prefer to get the ten feet in case we, you know, this, I'm just showing this, I really don't know what size.
When it says wide, it means depth.
No, I know that, that's why I'm, so. You just still want to be able to put the eight feet against the property line.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
What's on the other side? Just a curb and is there a fence, is there something?
Fence from the back of the building, we're proposing a twelve, twelve-foot high chain link fence with slats in it to screen.
Wait, wait, a twelve-foot high chain link fence?
Right now, the fence that's behind the building is approximately ten or so feet at least.
Okay, I'm not sure we're even clear on what variance is you need, a twelve-foot fence is gonna need a variance. A twelve-foot fence is gonna need a variance.
Is it on your property or your neighbor's property?
It'll be on our property.
It's on our property.
It is your- it was there before you-
It was, so the- the whole entire-
Is it there now?
It is there now. It's there right now, but it just needs to be rebuilt because the fire department ripped through the side of it and went, you know-
Did they have a variance before?
You know, it's at least, it was put in when they removed the shed to put the water line in behind the building. So I would, you know, I would think that there was a- that there was a permit and everything involved considering the town took the shed down in agreement, some type of agreement as far as putting that, those water lines and things behind the building.
When was this?
A long time ago. I don't know what year they put, uh, they took the shed down. It was, um, it was the year that they ran those water lines and put the watering sewer behind the building.
Is that when they were making the sidewalk, is that what we're talking about? Or is it earlier than that? Because I know that about twenty years ago, they put the sidewalks.
It's after tw- it's been less than twenty years. It's probably in the last, um, you know, I would say at least fifteen years, though.
Jim, do you remember this?
Maybe tw- maybe twelve years. But the fence that's back there now is- is considerable, it's at least ten feet. And it's already, the backside of it is- is fine and standing.
And you can see the fence after the house, the building was gone, right?
Yeah, the fence is still standing after the building was gone.
Yeah, you actually had some stuff stored in there for a while, right?
The also reason for the height is they've been experiencing some theft-
I'm not seeing a fence, guys.
They've been experiencing some theft at Unity Plaza and we didn't want to, we want to make sure that that fence was high enough so people couldn't climb over and take stuff off the pallet racks in the backyard.
But that's- that's not-
It's the front portion, yeah.
That's the front.
Yeah, but that's looking all the way in the back.
That's all the way in the back, you can't see it now.
Yeah, but again, we can do a site visit, I mean-
Is it gone now, like?
No, the fence is still there, you can see it from Route eighty-two.
I remember seeing the fence up there.
You can still see the chain link standing. At the- at the most rear, absolute rear of the property.
Doesn't show up on this picture, that's from-
Yeah, but I remember the fence, because as was mentioned, you had it-
Okay.
For a portion, a period of time, you had something around it.
We- yes, yeah.
Correct.
But I don't think that's a fence going around it.
Looks like it.
Because they needed a ten-foot fence. So that's the only time I can ever think of that we've ever had a variance or a fence, but I was on the planning board then, not. So I wouldn't have seen it from this angle.
I mean, can you just look at this, I mean, I can't see a fence here.
That's because there's- that's because there's greenery grown all around it right now.
Okay.
In this picture, you can't see it. This fence goes all the way across the back of the property line. It comes from this fence, goes straight back there, and goes completely across to the other.
I remember seeing it.
It's still standing, but it's very green right now.
Yeah.
Are you planning any racks along the front of the property?
No.
So there's not gonna be no storage, no displays, nothing in the front of the property?
Nothing in the front of the property. We have a- we're intending on a vestibule where we'll put displays on the inside, is the intention.
All right, I think we need to be clear on all the variances before we advertise, because-
Okay.
There's-
Yeah, that's one of the reasons I was asking with the urgency, so-
So you're gonna do your own review and give us a list of the variances and then we'll modify our application according, is that what you just said?
I'm not sure it's up to us to tell you what we need. I think it's up to you to tell us what you need.
Well, we were open to get some help from the planning board, but since we're only in sketch-
But again, if you work with Michelle, I think she will identify all the lists.
So those were the last things that Michelle said that we needed aside from what we had on the application.
But then where's the twelve-foot fence?
Okay.
I mean, yeah-
Can we see that letter?
Sure.
Pam can email it out to us, too.
Well, I- maybe let's see what the letter says, maybe it addresses it, maybe it doesn't. Okay. Okay, let me read it.
Yeah, because you're a very tight situation, so I would suggest to clean it up in one setting, just have all the variances in one application rather than go piece by piece.
Sure, so the intention, though, just so that it's understood, is that this is a very expensive process. It costs a lot of money between architects and everything else. So, um, basically, the intention is to find out that we can build the building before we finalize any more plans and put any more money into the planning of the building. So these are the things that we're asking for, that we have knowledge that we're gonna need. If- if we get them, then we will be building this building. And if we don't get them, then we are not gonna be able to move forward.
Right now, I'm seeing some significant issues. So until you have some discussion with the property owner next door about a potential cross-access easement and the ability to use their parking and you, they can use yours on the various hours, because those last two parking spaces, you can't back out of. So you're gonna eliminate two parking spaces right off the top because that- that hammerhead, like I said, just doesn't work. It's not big enough, it's not deep enough. You know, you're running into issues about racks on the property line. You want to make sure that you're being a good neighbor and that-
Sure.
You know, they agree with having those there because I believe there were some issues before, partly because of all the display all over the place. So I don't think we're- I don't think we can answer you yet, okay? Because I think it would be helpful and it would be- create a better site plan if we can fix some of the issues as opposed to just giving a variance.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
And just so, for the record, I mean, the letter indicates that you're supposed to have forty spaces for parking, you have twenty-seven proposed. You need two handicapped, I think your plan shows one. They suggest that you reach out to Pizza Village for the same things that the chair is pointing out. You need the sideyard variance for the building, you need the variance for the racking. And what they ask you about whether you're gonna have appropriate fencing, so I don't think the issue of the twelve-foot fence being there was discussed yet. And the aisle widths.
I don't know that we-
All those things were raised, so you need to look at that and make sure what you're requesting must addresses those issues as far as the variances.
Yours says two hundred fifty square feet per, or one car per two hundred fifty square feet of spaces dedicated to sales or service. So I kind of outlined in red that area.
Mm-hmm.
And I come up with thirty-three, she came up with something more than that.
She said forty.
Pardon?
She said forty.
Because are you including the propane in the back? Because that sells in service in the back. You guess?
I guess, yeah.
Are you an architect?
Because it's not a square feet of area, floor area, I guess we're talking about the building, but that would be-
Floor area.
Then people could really get fancy with that, yeah.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, I think there's a little bit of issue, yeah.
I also need an understanding as to why a twelve-foot fence is required. The highest fence I can, and Pam and I can remember it being approved, is a ten-foot fence. And that's for a post office, that's an absolute requirement of the postal service. So we're gonna need to understand why you even need a twelve-foot fence.
So the reason for the twelve-
I'm not saying you need it now, I'm just saying, you know, you have to explore your variances, what you're gonna need, and then come up in with an appropriate explanation as to why you would need those or if in fact you can reduce it and perhaps be limited to a ten-foot fence.
What, um, what is the limit on fencing right now, eight feet?
Six.
Six feet.
Six feet.
Six feet?
Six feet.
Even in the back?
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
If there's anything special for business, yeah.
Yeah.
So...
And again, if you've had it for the last fifty years or whatever period, then it could be grandfathered in. But again, we need to know all those details from the applicant.
Sure.
All right?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
See you again next month.
Motion to adjourn?
Second, all in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Wow.